Call to order the meeting of Deschutes County Board of Commissioners on Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. We will start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I have, I would like to make a comment. Currently, we have, per my latest count this morning, at least 211 displaced Oregonians here in Deschutes County. We've had several facilities step up, including the Presbyterian Church, Super 8 motels in Bend and Redmond, and my place in Bend. And we really need to be compassionate for these individuals. A lot of people have lost everything, and can you imagine losing everything? I know that we've recommended a website where you can go and make donations, or if you just want to buy them, like, you know, gift cards for gas, for food. It really, it really does help because when you just get out of your house with just the clothes on your back and maybe your phone, it's, life will never be the same. And I did follow, Congressman Walden this morning on Twitter posted a number for those that need help to call FEMA for individual disaster assistance. And I did call that number this morning to confirm. It is 1-800-621-3362. You can also use your phone.
Say that again?
1-800-621-3362. Thank you for asking me to repeat it, because I say my numbers way too fast.
Yeah.
You can call them, and actually, they knew when I called that I was calling from Oregon and if I was calling. And so, the system seems pretty well set up, that you can follow through on that. If you do have access to a computer, or you can use your phone, you can go to disasterassistance.gov. So, please, make it easy, easy, easy on yourself. And that's where you can get federal FEMA assistance as an individual. So, remember that. There's a lot of people out there, and I know in Deschutes County, we have a lot of incredibly kind people. I just want to acknowledge Stuart, who owns Bellatasso this morning, was delivering coffee to several of the locations. And it's not been a good year for businesspeople, but there's Stuart. He had collected water for Warm Springs for a couple of months, and now he's back giving back and to Oregonians. So, thank you, Stuart, for being so kind and compassionate and seriously making a difference and making sure that I knew exactly who does need help and what we can do to help them. So, remember that.
Yeah, a couple of things. So, also, I want to thank people, and particularly the people that have worked so hard in the fires. We don't get too many reports about what they're doing, but there's literally thousands of people fighting the fires in Oregon. And it's got to be some very tough work. It's gone on for quite a few days, and still many of them are not very well contained. The other thing, I went out to the fairgrounds last week to kind of see what was going on, see what we were doing there, and then to the Super 8 hotel to kind of meet with some of the people there. Couple of thoughts I had then, I don't know if we've done anything more about it, was that one of the needs they have is meals for the people that are actually evacuated and staying here. And I didn't know if that might be something we could somehow use our kitchens at the fairgrounds as a place that would serve some meals, something we could offer that would help. The other was people have reached out, Deschutes Brewery specifically had contacted me about water. They have, I guess, a lot of canned water that they would make available. I'm not, I made a couple of calls about that to Nathan and others. I don't know if that's been worked on, but I'm sure water will be a continuing need. Also, I've talked with the sheriff, and they also have a fund set up that people can give to, and they're using those dollars, they've used it for other emergencies, to buy gift cards for evacuees, et cetera. So, I don't know the number on that. That would be something I thought about, we could do as a county. But they got right, I had talked to Nathan about it, but, so the sheriff's office has gotten right on that. But we, that would be something we could do if people, I think there's going to be thousands of people wanting to do something to help. So, since I'd mentioned that, maybe we can talk about it at some point, or...
I think gift cards, honestly, knowing people that have lost their home because they've lost everything, having that gift card is really, it's like cash in their hand, and they can go and buy what they need. And after a while, I, people get exhausted from having to buy everything. But like, right now, they definitely would want their, the basics that they really, you know, love and prefer. So, anyway, anything to brighten their day. And yes, Deschutes County has always been incredibly, powerfully compassionate, and this is time like no other.
And it's going to go on for quite a while. I mean, this, these needs are going to, they're going to change some, but sometimes it seems like we're through the fires, but we're not even through the fires. I mean, they're still burning.
And I would acknowledge that people don't know the status. They haven't been able to see their, their homes or their properties. Even if they've heard it's lost, they, they can't get a vision on it. So, this is very awkward, tense time for those people that have been displaced, not even been able to view where they used to live at this point in time. So, it is happening still, correctly.
Right. So, I believe there were 15 fires in Oregon as of yesterday. I hope no more started, but yes, only a couple on our side of the mountain. The one, the pace, near Paisley, and then there was a small fire out of Ukiah, Umatilla, and Union, and it was 50 acres yesterday. It's called the Birch Fire. So, I'm hoping that they can get that one stopped while it's still only 50 acres. So, resources were, hopefully, on the ground there. And also, we do have, we do have our rodeo, and the forecast for the air is supposed to clear. So, let's hope that that continues. And thank you for the collaboration of our fair director, Jeff Hines, who's put together these Sisters rodeo, the High Desert Stampede from Redmond, that committee, and the Crooked River Roundup. They were supposed to be celebrating their 75th year this year. And so, the three rodeo committees have all come together, and it's, it is going to be an amazing rodeo next couple of days. It will count for the California's Circuit Finals and the Columbia River Circuit Finals. Cowboys in the Northwest have had, well, they've been going to, what is it, South Dakota, Montana, Colorado. It's really nice to think that they can be home, and if we could just get rid of the smoke, that would be so wonderful.
My understanding, there's 400 or so contestants, participants, competing. So, I mean, this is a regional effect for the West Coast, yeah?
Right. And it, and the good news is, it's going to be on the Cowboy Channel, Channel 603 on DirecTV, on the whole, and performance Friday night will be televised. And it's nice to know that ours part of state will be recognized on the Cowboy Channel. Usually, it's Texas, or Colorado, or South Dakota, somewhere back there. So, you know what? They're actually filming in Oregon Friday night.
I was talking to one of the directors today of it, and they think that's going to be a big deal for our communities here and to get us on with a national platform like that, because the West Coast has been so non-involved this year, whereas the Midwest and some of the South have had rodeos. So, they're, that's a great thing for us as a county, to have it showcasing our fairgrounds and, and rodeo grounds. So, should be really good.
I want to acknowledge, there was a gentleman working on the arena to make it imperfect standards, level. I mean, he spent hours, and I actually heard him because they wanted to put his banner up. And he said, "No." He goes, "We don't, we don't need to put my banner up. I just wanted to do something for Deschutes County in appreciation." And I just thought, "Oh, my gosh." It was, it's amazing, and seeing the arena, I actually ran barrels there in 2015 on my horse Foxy, and the arena looks so terrific. So, I know the whole team, the whole fair board, team, Jeff's team, Martin was working for hours on watering and, you know, doing everything they can to. They've really done a lot of spiffing up, and I do believe the professional cowboys are going to greatly be happy that they're here once, and then we'll get that air cleared. So...
Do either of you know where to get tickets? If people want to go to the rodeo, it's tonight, or tomorrow night, Friday, Saturday, but I don't know where the tickets are available.
You can go online.
Cascade Shootout.
Cascade Shootout, and it's C-H-U-T-E-S. Yes.
Yeah, I was able to find it really easy. Just look that up, and then it says, "Click here for tickets."
Okay, good.
Anyway, it was nice to see it, Channel 21 covering it. I was like, "Oh, my gosh." And, and the good news is, my niece is running barrels, and my brother-in-law is team roping, and so, and my nephew is still wrestling. So, and he just won Greeley. So, great to have him in town. I hope, I hope I get to see them. So, I, any, do you want to add anything else, Commissioner Devon?
No, thank you. Great, great notes.
Okay, I want to add, we did have citizen input. We had several phone calls that I would like to point out. Jessella Reiter called regarding our board's decision on Thornburg and the golf course. So, we do have that message, and we do recognize it, and we will put that information into our record. And then also, Donna Harris called last night. She lives in Bend, and she called with comments on the opposition to the Thornburg Golf Course and impacts to wildlife. So, and I believe she also had, I listened to her call. I believe she also mentioned the Deschutes River and how the water is currently so low. So, we, we were aware of that. So, thank you both for calling.
One question I had about that, I saw the coverage in the bulletin about it, and I didn't understand, because I'd like to clarify from CDD, but that our decision wasn't approving the building of a golf course, which is how it's been made out. It was approving the site plan for a golf course if the resort ever went forward. That's a different decision. It's been conveyed to people as if we approved the building of a golf course. And I don't, is that...
Right.
Your understanding also that we didn't do anything besides the site plan?
Right. That's what we were approving.
That it met the requirements under Oregon law for a site plan? It wasn't, we weren't making a statement about water, or whether we think it's a great idea or anything?
When I talked to concerned citizens about this, I acknowledged that there's a, a master plan, master planning effort, a conceptual master plan, a final master plan that has been discussed for the last 15 years. Those are the steps that have required water and wildlife plans and mitigation requirements. Water use is coordinated by the State of Oregon. So, as long as the plan fits the rules and laws as they are, the water rights. We also live in a water mitigation district or area, so there's no extra water to be had. You don't add new water uses, you transfer water uses. So, we're not using more water, I mean, you know, relative to if somebody's using the water that summer or not, there's no more water rights available. The water rights have to be transferred. So, the big picture is, as I say, the final master plan is where these requirements were worked out. At this point, a site review, a site plan, application and approval is a step into really building this, but basically, it's been approved in the past. And I've been involved with some of it, and some of it's still being appealed.
Yeah, that's what I understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Devon. Okay, I do, we are, no public input is here today. We're now down to our consent agenda. Any comments? I did make one spelling correction on a name on the minutes. That was it.
So, I would, since Holly is here, propose pulling item number one, just to hear about the service director designees, health services director designees. So, move consent agenda minus item number one.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So, then we'll pull item number one. Holly, so glad to see you.
So, a little bit of, just the kind of the scenario of when this gets implemented, and then also with the list of people. I know that we have people come and go pretty regularly. So, how do we either update or stabilize the list as it changes?
Hi, Holly Harris, Program Manager at Behavioral Health. Yes, so this is an authority given to us by Oregon Administrative Rule that you authorize. And so, what this ability does is, when somebody's being seen in a mental health crisis by a master's level, qualified mental health professional who has experience and training in this area, when they're being seen in crisis and the determination is becoming apparent that the individual is a danger to themselves or others, or unable to care for their basic needs, the clinician, based on this authority, has the ability to direct law enforcement to take them into custody and transfer, transport them securely to St. Charles Medical Center for an evaluation. And oftentimes, these types of situations end up in what we call a two-physician hold, and in this instance, they're not used unless in extreme situations. We really try very hard to offer services in the least restrictive environment possible. We don't like to take people against their will to the hospital. It's not the best route to go, but we only do it when there's a safety concern for the individual.
So, this triggers kind of the deeper evaluation, two-physician hold is, yeah, is very much more analysis of the situation.
Correct. And so, we have all of our master's level clinicians, both at the stabilization center and our mobile crisis team have this authority, since they're all doing basically the same work, just in different locations.
Right. So, then this defines the list. I see the lists are the same for the two sections. Yeah, how, I know people come and go over time. So, yeah, how do we keep the list up to date?
I have, you know, I've wanted, over the years, to just have it include crisis staff and more of a generic, but legal has weighed in, and they really feel like it needs to specifically, based on statute, which I agree with them, in their opinion, that it needs to outline the names of the individuals who are given the authority. So, unfortunately, I'll probably be back here a lot, and just adding names as people leave the agency and we have turnover. We also had a lot of new staff hired through the stabilization center for our night shifts, based on the impacts grant. So, we're adding all those people. So, the list is a little bigger than, than normal. Okay.
Great. Well, that puts it in perspective.
Since you're here, I was, can you give us an update on the stabilization center about your ramping up your time and efforts?
Yeah, things are going really well. We actually will be open weekends, starting this weekend. So, we'll be pretty much seven to nine during the week, and then eight-thirty to nine on, eight-thirty AM to nine PM on Saturdays and Sundays. And then, we have, I think, made offers to all but one yet for our night shift positions related to impacts grant. And we will, we're aiming for mid-October to go 24/7. So, assuming all the offers go well, background checks clear, all that good stuff, we should be good to go for mid-October. So, pretty excited about that. We've been staying busy, steady, and really excited to kind of have three months under our belt to kind of, we really feel like we've got a sense of how things are going, and I'm ready to take it to the next step.
Great. Thank you.
Well, with that, I'll move board signature of order number 2020-052, Appointing Health Services Directors Designees.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. Thank you for joining us, Holly. It's always nice to see you in person, and thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
All right. So, we will now go to item number four, action item, the proposed Sisters Urban Renewal Plan Expansion Extension. Tom, would you like to start that out?
I will. Thank you, Commissioners. And Corey Misley should be in the waiting room, if you could let him in, and Elaine as well.
Great. So, Commissioners, I should say also, we may have slightly misinterpreted the communication that we received originally from Sisters on this proposal. It appeared initially that it was a, an addition to their plan in terms of the taxes that would be diverted to pay for a new list of projects. But in, we've had, I've had some communication with Corey since I prepared the memo for you last week, and it appears that it's, it's, they're not, they're operating within their original approved maximum indebtedness that was authorized as part of the adoption of the urban renewal area some time ago. So, Corey's going to speak to that and, and explain for you precisely what the proposed resolution from the city does. But, again, it may not result in net additional taxes being diverted from the four countywide service districts that exist in Sisters, Deschutes County, Countywide Law Enforcement, 911, and Extension 4H, but rather, update the project list to be able to take advantage, from the city's perspective, the urban renewal area's perspective, more of the original debt that was authorized, given the fact that their expiration of the district is, will occur under the original proposal in the next few years. So, they would like to extend that deadline in order to accomplish those existing projects. So, with that, unless there are questions, I'll, I'll turn it over to Corey. Well, I guess, my question, I don't quite understand what you're saying. Are, are you saying, basically, that we aren't going to have any more tax deferral from county taxes to the city, or are we saying that we might, but it's for other projects?
What I'm, what I'm saying is, so when the original district was authorized, there was maximum indebtedness that was established at that time, and represented within that was expected, or sort of an upper limit of taxes that would, that could be diverted from the taxing districts that exist within the boundaries of the URA. So, with the, and there was a list of projects that were tied to that, that original debt. So, that, the URA has been operating, you know, all these years, and the expiration is approaching, and they simply won't have time to accomplish those projects and have enough time within the, the time limit of the URA to, to pay debt on those, on, on...
So, they're using the original money over a longer period of time, is what?
Essentially, yeah. That's a simpler way to say it.
No, no new tax dollars are expected to be deferred, but the remainder of the ones that were authorized in 2003 may be still used?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. Was it going to run out in 2023? Is that, was it a 20-year originally? It looks, it looks like it was set up in '03.
I think Corey can answer that. Looks like he's ready to...
Okay.
Look, he's ready.
Corey?
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
I just want to, Corey, thank you. You will almost be at Sisters two years in, what, November? So, thank you very much for your service in Sisters.
My pleasure. I'd like to introduce Elaine Howard, who is from Elaine Howard Consulting. She specializes in urban renewal agency consulting across the state, and I think some of you are familiar with her and her work in Deschutes County as well.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to provide a brief overview. Tom did give a good, quick summary as it relates to what we are proposing to do. The only minor adjustment to the staff report, the background information that was provided in your packet, is that the changes we are proposing to make do not require taxing district approval. We've been working with our local taxing districts and our taxing district partners to keep them aware of this update. And in the spirit of partnership, we want to obviously be transparent and, you know, let them know what we're planning to do. But the changes that we are proposing don't require statutorily a, a vote by those taxing districts. So, nonetheless, happy to be here, happy to be providing an update as it relates to Sisters and the urban renewal agency and where we're planning to go in the future. So, I'll give a brief overview, and then I think the most efficient way to move forward would be just to open it up to questions. And depending on the question, either Elaine and/or I are, are happy to provide additional information. So, the Sisters Urban Renewal Agency and District Boundary was established in 2003. The maximum indebtedness, the amount of the, above and beyond the frozen tax base in '03 that could be spent on projects within that boundary, was approximately $9.9 million. That was the original maximum indebtedness. Over the last 17 years, about $2.1 million has been spent. Most of that occurred a decade or more ago. There's not been a lot of activity in the last five years with the urban renewal agency. We have done a couple of projects, including a streetscape design project a couple of years ago, but most of that, most of those funds were utilized quite a while ago. So, it's sort of been in hibernation. As you all know, urban renewal is a key tool for communities to be able to incentivize investment and move key projects forward. And so, one of the things we needed to do was to assess the future of this district, and also refresh and understand the project list from 2003, what was still relevant, what had been accomplished, what still made sense, and then also what needed to, to be added in, in terms of moving forward. So, we, we did recognize and see that, you know, we, we have quite a bit of maximum indebtedness that we still have at our disposal. 2023 was the expiration date at that point. In '03, they had put in a 20-year term, which, again, is not a requirement of urban renewal agencies. I was, I was not around. I've not seen background information or any of the kind of intentions as to necessarily why they chose a 20-year timeframe. I think it does make sense to utilize these funds as expediently as possible, but it, put it to work and, and ultimately get the dollars back on the tax rolls once the urban renewal agency has accomplished their, their goals and objectives, and, and get that tax base back to all the taxing districts, including the city itself. We forego the largest amount of funds into, into the URA from our general fund. So, looking at moving forward, we did want to use the remaining, and we felt like about a seven-year extension. So, moving from the 2023 expiration to a 2030 expiration would provide us with a adequate amount of additional capacity for key projects in Sisters. So, extending the duration to 2030 would allow us to have an additional $4.7 million in capacity for projects. And at the same time, that would leave about $3 million of maximum indebtedness not used. So, it certainly is a compromise as it relates to the amount of original maximum indebtedness. And then we also have layered into this resolution that an extension beyond 2030, if the urban renewal agency would like to do that, would require, in, you know, again, not a statutory requirement, but putting this in our update, a little bit of a handcuff, so to speak, that we would need approval from three out of the four top taxing districts to extend the duration beyond 2030. So, kind of saying that this is, this is, we, we did want to put an expiration date, you know, been working closely with our local taxing districts, our fire district in particular, and, and want to be reasonable and thoughtful with how we want and when we want to use these funds. So, at that time, you know, later in this decade, if we wanted to extend that, it would require the city, the school district, the fire district, and at this point, the county, three out of those four would need to extend beyond that 2030 duration. So, we felt like that was certainly a compromise and in line with how expediently we planned to utilize these dollars. The other important adjustment is the project list, and several of the projects from '03 are, are no longer relevant. One of the key ones to note is that, at that point, Sisters and ODOT were exploring options as it relates to perhaps a couplet in downtown. Well, that's no longer the plan. That's not in our transportation system plan. We've made a significant investment with the roundabout on the west end of town at the US 20 Barclay intersection. We are full steam ahead, doing everything we can, investing local dollars in the design of the, the other bookend, the roundabout at the Locust 20 intersection. And that's in our transportation system plan, and we're working closely with, with ODOT and other partners. So, you know, we needed to update the project list as it relates to the relevance of different projects in the community. And one of the key things we did, over the last year that we've been, been working on this, it's been a, a little bit of one step forward, two steps back. We had a staff member, key staff member leave who was working on this. We got momentum back going again over the winter, and then, as, as everyone knows, in, in March, we had a bit of a curveball thrown our way with COVID. So, this got, again, kind of put on the back burner. But here we are, wanting to move forward with this at this point. But I, I want to emphasize that the project list really includes projects that have already been vetted through community plans, whether that is the Sisters Community Vision, Sisters Country Vision, or whether that's through existing transportation system plan, or water sewer master plans, or, you know, top priorities that we know everyone in the community, there is a need for, such as, such as workforce housing. So, we did not do a, a long, broad, public engagement process to update this project list. We really wanted to be targeted and identify key projects that we know are already on the to-do list, and understand how we could expedite those projects and really get them across the finish line utilizing urban renewal agency dollars. So, that was, that was important, and that was a bit of a strategic decision. So, I think I've hit the, the high notes as it relates to the duration extension and the project list update, ultimately, some of the compromises that we feel like we've made. We feel like it's very reasonable. We feel like we're going to be able to use these dollars, put them to work sooner rather than later, get some really important stuff done. than later, get some really important stuff done and go on from there. So just, we're not expanding the maximum indebtedness. We're not expanding the boundary, as I mentioned at the beginning. And that's why, you know, we're just here kind of briefing you all, making sure you're aware of this and comfortable, but don't need to necessarily seek formal approval. So Elaine and I are here, happy to answer any questions you may have and open it up.
Thank you so much, Corey.
This is Commissioner DeBoe, and this might be for Elaine. So when we have a urban renewal district that's been in place for, what, 17 years, I guess now, and it hasn't been utilized the way it was envisioned. So that means that the, the tax rate, the dollars to be taken out of the other districts has been less than could have happened. And now this is going to kind of re-engage the district and then the, the taxes will... I guess my thought is the, the tax assessed value has gone up X. And has it been utilized less than the value or is it the maximum amount coming out of the districts as first 17 years go by?
So the district has been taking its full division of taxes over this timeframe. The actual amount of money that they've been taking is less than was projected in 2003.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons why they haven't been able to do more within the district is the growth that was projected originally. You know, we, unfortunately, many plans that were adopted in this timeframe have this problem because of the Great Recession. That impacted property values and the ability of urban renewal areas across the state to do projects. So they have been taking division of taxes, but the amount that they've taken is far less than what they projected in their original plan.
Is there a balance in a bank account at this point in time? As in, is there a positive balance on the, or is there debt associated with the, the district?
But we, we have a, every year, we're required by state law, just like the county and the city and other public entities to adopt a budget and follow Oregon budget law. And so, yeah, we do, we do have cash, cash on hand. We have a reserve account and then we also do have debt that we are servicing from some of those projects earlier in the life of the U R A.
Okay, so there's kind of both. I just thought, yeah, maybe there was no debt associated with it. So there is debt and there's cash in the bank.
Correct.
Do we have that information? Is that published in our documents? I didn't, I didn't.
We could send you the, the budget for the, the urban renewal agency budget.
And it's just for information, just interesting to see how it looks over a 17-year period.
Sure.
So Corey, this is Commissioner Anderson. So just to clarify, actually, the biggest contributor outside the school district to these funds is Deschutes County because we come in under four categories. Deschutes County, countywide law enforcement, county extension 4H and 911 are all things that we oversee. So that, that actually totals more than the city of Sisters by a few, by 20, 20-some thousand. So anyway, just, just an FYI, you know, we've kind of been getting a crash course on urban renewal districts because we had proposals from city of Bend. We have one coming from the city of Sisters that we're also working on now. And then we, this one here. It, when I look at the intended targets for this, I mean, it's great if there's going to be a workforce housing project. I don't know, it looks like this only contributes 400,000 to that 400 or $4 million project, so 10%. So it, I mean, that may or may not come to pass if there's not somebody that's going to spend the other 3.6 million to do it. Is that, is my thinking correct there that you still need to find the funding? Because I'm not sure the city of Sisters is going to build housing units, but maybe, maybe they are, but.
Well, that, that project in particular, that's a good example of this plan and this project list being a little bit of part art and part science. So, you know, we came up with that $4 million estimate, you know, looking at and talking with Housing Works and other regional housing providers in terms of what a, a larger scale multifamily complex that is the best bang for the buck in terms of providing units would cost. And then we, we do not have all of those dollars secured. I think if you talk to David Brandt or, or others who are in that business, it is a, a complicated recipe with many, many funding sources to be able to ultimately get to pulling the trigger on a project like that. But having additional local dollars is always a bonus and certainly can move a project forward faster or, or even move it forward at all if it, if perhaps.
Yeah, and so if that's what you're talking about is a Housing Works type pros, um, prospect, that is.
We don't know who the partner would be. We, you know, we would.
But if it's something like that, if it's some, so my concern with those is, and I, I just want to get this out there, is that they build very nice facilities that cost 300 and 400, you know, dollars a square foot, whereas what we need are things that are being built for 100 to $200 a square foot. And I'm just, if, if this urban renewal money is going to those expensive projects, I just, I don't know, I think that's something you, the city should look at, whether that's the best bang for the buck with taxpayers' money because it's, it's very, they build very nice things and they get a lot of different incentives and state funding and all this stuff, but it's, we don't house as many people when we, that way as we could, is all I'm saying. So, okay.
Noted.
Um, Corey, delighted to see our roundabout is on the, the list. Since I'm the chair of the COAC group for Central Oregon, I'm just wondering, do we have a, a timeframe when that roundabout is going to actually happen? Has ODOT told it? I know you guys had already spent the money on the design. That's, that was excellent. You're doing your share.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a, a timeline that we would love to see happen. Unfortunately, it's, it's far from, from rock solid. So a couple of years ago, the message we were getting from ODOT is that, you know, we weren't going to see funding until, you know, 2027 or beyond. They're just not, they're not seeing dollars in these next couple of years.
I've been pushing it. It's been going on all my surveys, you know that, so. And that they need to get more money spent in Central Oregon because we are the number one growth region and definitely helping Sisters with east to west and west to east transportation through the city would be really lovely.
Yeah, I'd, I'd reiterate that, you know, I, I don't get their schedules. I mean, we're, we got all these other projects we're working on from ODOT, but I, I see that roundabout as one of the ones that makes the most sense of any. And it doesn't, I mean, we see how many are being built in the city of Bend right now. It just doesn't make sense that seven years from now we'll have a roundabout there when we could have it next year. So I don't know. I, Commissioner Dare, if we can help somehow with the state and pushing them.
Right.
I don't know where Commissioner DeBoe is. I, I'm really adamant about it. I, I think it's more important than the ones, some of the others that are talking about are spending so much effort.
Well, it does back up the traffic.
Oh, yeah, it's awful.
In Sisters, I mean, it does, you do slow down. You have to, you're in a nether part of, but we need to, if we probably should write a letter together, don't you think, to ODOT? And I, I did believe, I did do the survey and I, it was part of what I thought that, you know.
I don't know what the survey is. I'm talking about this lobbying.
Well, it was a.
I don't need to ask anybody's opinion of this. I, I see it and it's, this should be pushed is, and I'm glad you're pushing it. I don't.
But we could push it bigger.
We could push it more and I, I just think it's one of the most obvious roundabout places I see in the county more than some of the others.
And we could ask ODOT to join us at a meeting like this or, you know, work session type meeting and just discuss it. My understanding is, because I've worked with Gary Farnsworth on this and we see him, him and Tom, Bob Townsend at the MPO, the House Bill 2017, a couple of years ago, pre-scheduled the projects for the next 10 years. And that's the, the box they're in. They really don't have a lot of authority to change the project priorities for 10 years because of the, the way House Bill 2017 is written. And I'm just saying, so it's at a legislative level is more than an ODOT level. And that's what I, you know, I've been informed of. So, yeah, just let you know, that's what I understand. Yep.
Okay, then we'll talk to Representative Bonham and Senator Finley.
Yeah.
And they're actually going to be in town in a couple of days. So we will ask them to put that on the top. And I know that they definitely would be willing to do that. So that would be great, whatever we can. Corey, we're not hearing you. I can see your lips are moving, but the sound, is he on mute?
He's not, but when you talk, it cuts him off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I won't talk.
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Barely.
Okay, speak up.
Okay, yes, you need to speak a little louder.
Quick, we, we would welcome your, your help in, in any way on that project, you know, whether that's looking at the county T S P, whether that's being, you know, writing a letter of support for a grant, maybe to the, the feds, or whether that is working with local legislate, legislators, like Commissioner DeBoe said, you know, at, at a legislative level at Salem. So we're putting our money where our mouth is. We're going to do everything we can, but yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna take a team effort. So thank you for the support.
Well, we have a, a failed overpass in southern Deschutes County that's not in any project list at this point in time. It's on a monitoring list.
It's what?
It's on a monitoring list, you know, and, and maybe they'll do some engineering work, but there's no money scheduled for it. So as I say, it's a great discussion to have. We can definitely put some pressure on it.
That's a great point. Okay.
Good. Any other questions for Corey?
No, thank you for the update.
Or Elaine?
So as I understand, we're not being asked our opinion of this. You're kind of informing it. We could, we, we ventured our opinion with the city of Bend on their urban renewal district because it's a big, a big ask tax-wise and unfortunately, I'm running for office and it's been used now against me that I wasn't supportive of the community, but, so I'm not very inclined to vote on anything. Doesn't make, if it's not needed. People wonder why we, we, why we ventured into that, the city of Bend. It's like, they don't even know that we're deferring tax dollars, so.
Huge tax dollars.
So in fact, yeah, so if Elaine's available, real quick again, do you work in the state of Oregon primarily or other states?
I only work in the state of Oregon and my firm only does urban renewal consulting. And I've worked with the majority of urban renewal agencies across the state, so.
Is there any legislative discussion about whether changing this system? And I'm, you know, this is your consulting world, but my point is, you know, we're receiving these and it just, it's kind of sour sometimes about how the dollars, it's, they're not voted on by the citizens. The city council has the opportunity to do this. So is there legislative history on making changes to this or is that a big no-no? Or is there, is it, is it a partisan divide or can you just give me some insight into that?
Um, yes. As far as I know, there's no partisan divide on urban renewal. It's pretty widely supported across the state because it's a tool in your community's toolboxes to improve your cities. And again, I'm a proponent of urban renewal. I do urban renewal consulting. On the other hand, I have, in the 2019 session and in the 2009 session, worked with cities across the state and the special districts to make changes to the urban renewal statutes to address some of the concerns of the different special districts. So 2019, there were some changes made to reflect some of the concerns. So yes, there are ongoing issues addressed at, at this point. Because of measures five, 47 and 50, we had to change how urban renewal division of taxes was done. And that, that, that is what we have now. So nobody has come clear back to say, well, should we change again how urban renewal is actually funded? Nobody's done that. But what we do, do is have ongoing discussions about how to address issues of the different special districts.
Yep, great. Well, as I say, I mean, it just, you know, the city of Bend's downtown core, core plan was a big one, you know, and, and, you know, we wrote a letter of opposition, but it really didn't have any, any weight in that situation. We asked them to make it a little bit shorter in time and a little bit less scope and it was acknowledged, but it was moved on. So, yeah, just vibrant discussions about it.
Basically, money was taken, basically, without really any involvement of any of the.
And when they're that big and we have multiple ones, you know, so we have this, this shadow tax base that's being swept before, you know, the, the voters really understand what's going on. But as I say, I'm just sharing with you what we get to see as commissioners.
The other thing that was interesting in that, because it was, I was asked about it in an interview, only two entities gave an opinion on that. The school district didn't, the C O C C didn't, the library didn't. And the school districts don't because the money's taken out of the property taxes that would go to the school system, but isn't taken from this school district. So it was $70 million or something that goes into the big general fund for the schools in Oregon, but the local district doesn't see it as a loss to their district of that much. It's only a loss of like five. But meanwhile, the education system is being drained of these monies that go to urban development as opposed to education generally. But so they don't, they don't say anything. C O C C didn't say anything.
Well, and then the education budget at the legislative session is always a contentious, you know, I think it needs a lot more.
They want more money, but they're, they're allowing money to be taken at these ground, ground, at ground level.
Corey, this is nothing about Sisters at this point. I'm very supportive and I'm excited about the plans. It's just, the, the bigger picture is we don't have a say. You know, thank you very much for informing us, but as commissioners representing all the citizens in Deschutes County, we almost don't have a say in this, which is awkward.
Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Corey. Almost congratulations for two years of being in Sisters. So appreciate that you're there. And Elaine, thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you.
All right, okay. So I believe now we should go to Nahad for our COVID update, please.
So this will be a Facebook Live item also, is my understanding, so just.
Yes, the rest of that meeting will be Facebook Live for the wildfire update, also from Nathan. Okay.
Good morning.
There he is.
Good morning.
Good morning, Nahad.
Good to see you.
We can't quite hear you.
You cannot hear me?
Well, now we can. It was, it was converting.
Do we have this document or?
No, I don't think so. We don't have this one.
I think I may have sent it too late. I think it was around 9:30-ish and maybe the team didn't have a chance to print, so my apologies. You know, up until last minute that we're, basically that I'm presenting, we are updating the data that we are getting. So that's why it's a bit, we cannot send it earlier, but I'll do my best to send the slides earlier.
Well, they might bring it down to us. So that would be appreciated.
I'm writing right now.
So I hope you had a nice break from us and from me last week.
Oh, you were missed. You were always missed.
Thank you. I was fishing for that. I appreciate that.
Well, I know, but there's three of us.
So if I, can I get started or would you like?
Please do.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. So I, I hope we're streaming live because I do have a community quiz coming up. But let me start off by thanking you again for inviting us. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadrazadi. I'm the director of public health for Deschute County Health Services. Unfortunately, today I don't have Dr. Fossett with me. He had some personal matters to attend to. I do believe that Dr. Conway is on, is available on Zoom. Many thanks to Jenny Faith for the great, the usual great data analysis and preparations she did for this presentation. And as, as always, I would like to express my gratitude to the health services staff for their dedication, compassion and meticulous work. So a couple of weeks ago, as you are kindly aware, we launched a community quiz. Just a reminder to our community members who might be watching the live stream on Facebook, please do insert the answer to this question in the comments box. And I believe that the first community members with the correct answer will receive a beautiful fanny pack which can be used for carrying masks and hand sanitizer. So this week's question is a true and false one, and it's timely as schools are reopening, at least with comprehensive distance learning programs. For K through 12 to reopen in-person classes, only two of the following three metrics must be met. So less than 10 cases per 100,000 population, less than 5% county test positivity, and less than 5% state test positivity in the preceding seven days for three weeks in a row. So it's a true and false question, and I'll come back to this question at the end of the slides again. A quick shout out to Whitney, Morgan and Jenny who helped prepare the webpage on our deschute.org website. If community members go to. If community members go to deschute.org/covid19, they will see a visualization of the data. So great job to the three colleagues and other colleagues who were involved, perhaps our IT team and others. So congratulations. So commissioners, this slide shows the county case by week. Of course, this week is not shown yet. We've had five new cases so far this week. So far, we've had, since March eleventh, we've had a total of seven hundred twenty-eight cases with twelve deaths. We saw a huge spike in July, but a significant drop in August. This past week, we did see a slight increase of around fifty-four percent in new cases reported. I think that number is somehow skewed because in one day we had around nine cases reported. So I think that that one day number is the, that skewed the total numbers for the week. Having said that, I think all of you and all of us can appreciate that variability in numbers going up and down is expected. We can't, you know, just expect the numbers always to go down or to remain stagnant, right? So there's going to be variation. Importantly though, what we've seen is a drop in cases in August. And I'm personally convinced that the drop in numbers is driven by two factors. One is, of course, I've said over and over, the choices and the behaviors of our community members, of all of us, especially in use of masks. And two, I believe, is the county's containment strategy, which is contributing to containment of the numbers and even the drop in numbers. This next slide is the cumulative.
Before you go on there, Nahad, I wanted to ask you something. So to me, this, this slide that you just did highlights the whole problem with the intersection between public health and education is that, so we're in three of the last, or in the last three weeks, two of the weeks were not below the ten per one hundred thousand that we need to be in the county to be in public, to allow the four to twelve to open.
Yes, we were. We were.
No, we're not. It's, you have to be less than ten per hundred thousand, and we're at twenty. So we're more than ten per hundred thousand.
That's for two hundred thousand people, though. The chart, we're right at ten, that line.
No, that's my point. We're right at the line. We're not below it. It isn't, well, maybe you can explain. Does it have to be less than ten per hundred thousand or, or right at ten? This is my point. Is it, Nahad?
Yeah. Commissioner, I think if we are coming with around twenty cases per week or less, we can make a strong argument for reopening of schools. I don't think we're going to be held from reopening schools at this juncture.
So, so you're saying that this, there's a hard rule, but we can argue that at twenty, we're okay, even though we're a little bit above ten per hundred thousand? Because we don't have quite two hundred thousand people, I don't think, in the county. So we're a little bit of.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. I mean, technically speaking, the, the three metrics that we're looking at are, one of them does say less than ten, and it's not less than or equal to. So you're right, technically speaking.
That, that's my first point. The other point, though, is it could easily be twenty-one instead of twenty, and then we're above. And maybe if we didn't test so many, you know, we're testing, you know, huge numbers of people now. So it just seems to me it's so fickle that, or if we just go up to twenty-one and twenty-two in two weeks in a row, it just seems like this whole test based on an exact number doesn't really work with education. And I guess, I guess that's what I'm seeing here. I don't think anybody started a campaign to reopen the schools because of it. But you see it like as a fifty-four percent increase from one week to the other. I see it as kind of noise. I mean, it could easily go from thirteen to twenty or twenty to thirteen that just, by whoever gets tested. I mean, it's, we're only doing a, you know, it's not an absolute test.
So if we didn't do as much testing, Commissioner, probably where it would show up is the positivity rate would go up.
No, I get that. Yep, I get that.
But if that goes up, if our case numbers are low, but our positivity goes above five percent, then it's, it's basically we're in the same boat.
But we have to meet both tests. Just, again, I'm just saying this is a very.
Yeah.
It's, by locking it into numbers, it shows the fickleness of it.
Now you're giving away the answer. Now you're giving away the community quiz answer, Commissioner.
Well, I, yeah, well, I think it's what we need to talk about, so.
Yeah, for sure. You're right. So we need to meet all three metrics in order to open schools for K through twelve. So it's at the county level, it's at the state level, and it's the, is the case numbers, Commissioner. You're, you're absolutely right. And in fact, if numbers do go up or down and the testing is varied, it could definitely show up either in the positivity or in the hospitalization. They're going to show up in the hospitalization admissions anyway. So may I proceed, Commissioner?
Actually, I wanted to comment that if we didn't have the sixty-six positive cases in the long-term care facility, we wouldn't even have that middle spike. So you take out the sixty-six and, yeah, it's, it's, and you, it's a, that's in a very small community in Deschutes County. So anyway, the positivity has been below five percent since the twenty-sixth of July. Our positivity has been extremely, extremely in the positive end of life. But it's like, how many people are in the hospital? That, that, I can't wait to get to that one.
Where's your posit, where'd you read the positivity tests?
It's back there about fifteen, fourteen, I don't know, ten pages or something?
We'll get to it then, okay.
Yeah, we'll get to it. I just, you know, if that's one of the things that count, I think that's something that we really need to be thankful for. And there were still, what, twelve hundred case, tests, twelve hundred and forty tests this week, last week? So sorry. Okay, Nahad, go ahead.
Sure. No, to your point, if we do remove the long-term care facility outbreaks, we will have around maybe twenty, thirty percent reduction in the case numbers that we would have seen, or maybe more in the, we would still probably see somewhat of an increase in, in number of cases. It wouldn't take everything away, but it definitely would take some of it away. So you're right on that point. So if I may continue on this slide, this is the, this is the cumulative numbers. And of course, as the numbers go down, the curvature here becomes more flat. And the flatter, the better, of course. We do see an increase in rate of change, of course, in July, but it's slowing down quite a bit. And here, I'm also inserting some of the key milestones and decisions and holidays. And it's interesting to just follow this pattern and see what transpires or what could transpire, usually around two to six weeks after some of the key milestones or holidays, for example. This slide, Commissioner, I think Henderson, you were alluding to this. In terms of the, this is one of the school metric, metrics, which is the weekly case rate per hundred thousand. And we are around, hovering around ten, seven, ten. So the last three weeks, we've, we're definitely showing a great improvement and sign of moving in the right direction. And in fact, in the last five weeks, I would say, five, six weeks, we are definitely seeing a decline in numbers. And that's again, thanks to the behaviors and choices, as well as the containment strategy. This slide shows the county cases by age group. And the key message here is that really everyone is vulnerable. We are even seeing cases in less than twenty. However, around fifty percent of the cases are between the ages of twenty and fifty years. And that's the box in red here, as you can plainly see. This slide, and I'm going to say in advance that the zero percent hospitalized, that you see hospitalized is not any issues with the data, is correct figure. This slide shows our cases by age and month. So our age distribution of cases has looked fairly consistent the last few months. As, as you can see, there's probably an equal in September and even in August, where we are seeing an equal distribution of the case by demographics and age groups. In September, of the thirty-plus cases we've had so far, none of them seem to have been hospitalized. And that's something very positive and something for us to explore further to understand better what's driving that. This slide shows how the cases are linked or categorized. We have continued to have less than thirty percent of our cases as sporadic, or we call them community-acquired or unknown linkages. So this is really critical. The less that percentage is or that proportion is, the better for our containment of this virus. And, and because we know the source of infection, we're able to really employ our containment strategy. And just a reminder to our community members is that when we do know the source and we are able to reach out to the contacts, we can reach out and not only provide them with early support, which is probably helping with the severity of the disease, but also we're able to encourage them to quarantine and stay out of contact with others so that they don't infect other loved ones, family members, neighbors, friends, colleagues, and community members. So really, communities' cooperation is critical in the success of this strategy. If somebody receives a phone call, it's good to verify who's calling them. And then please be forthright in terms of sharing information. And I have a little story that I will share a bit later about this. I included this slide because I think we're seeing an interesting trend here. This is the history. This slide shows the history of travel among cases. Overall, around two hundred, so specifically one hundred ninety-two people indicated recent travel. That's around a quarter of the cases. Early in the pandemic, you may recall, we had many cases who had traveled. Now, the reason I included this slide is because in September, in September, we have seen nearly half of our cases report recent travel. So I would say that traveling and the attributes of traveling, such as reduced spaces, higher duration, and numbers, should be factored into our decision-making, in our daily decisions, or when some holidays are coming up and the choices we're making, we should consider those.
So you're saying travel, including car and plane?
Yes, Commissioner, yes.
Okay.
But I think, so in that period where you're saying forty-seven percent is, there's been travel, we only have thirty-three cases that we've reported in those two weeks that are in September. So probably we'll need a little bigger pool, won't we, to really see if that's a, I mean, that's a pretty small number of cases so far. It's not like some of the other weeks where we've had, or months where we've had two hundred cases or something.
Yeah, you're right, Commissioner. We, we definitely will keep monitoring the data in September and see what transpires. This is preliminary data for your, for your and community's viewing at this point.
Do you have any further breakdown of the travel? Is it people that happen to be coming here and getting tested positive? Or are they people from here that go away and then come back, or?
Yes, these are Deschute residents, Commissioner.
Deschutes residents. So by traveling, you're saying they're?
Yeah, within the state, outside of the state, with car, with airplane, yes. But if I, if I can perhaps bring, share a quick story that might bring the data to life. This, the story might seem a little bit awkward, only because we're trying to mask, obviously, any identification potential here. So bear with us, please. But I think the essence of this story will, is powerful. So a group of friends celebrated a special occasion. Half of the friends traveled to another state for a few days, and unbeknownst to them, several became infected with COVID-19 while away. When they returned without symptoms yet, they spent a couple of days with friends and family. And then the other half of the group traveled to another state shortly thereafter. While the second group was away, they learned that several from the first trip, from the first group, had tested positive for COVID-19. A few days later, several from the second group also became ill with COVID-19 while still away. So in all, this outbreak lasted almost two months, affected ten households, with a total of twenty-one confirmed cases and seventy-one close contacts, all of whom were actively monitored for symptoms for fourteen days. So this is just a story around socialization, but especially traveling outside of our residence and being at risk of exposure to COVID-19.
But Nahad, did any of these people end up in the hospital? I mean, because do we do this for the flu? I mean, this, this type of a detail? I'm just wondering. Did, do you know, did any of these people end up in the hospital?
Commissioner, let me check on that and get back to you. It was a fair, yeah, let me not speculate on that. I can check on that and get back to you. Is that okay?
That would be great. Thank you.
Good question.
Now, a centerpiece of our containment strategy is testing, as you are very well aware. And in general, we have sufficient slow tests, so-called slow tests. These are the standout tests in our community, but we're still limited in terms of rapid tests, as you're kindly aware. In this slide, tests are shown by collection dates. We have remained consistent with testing roughly around or above fifteen hundred per week, which is two and a half times or two hundred fifty percent higher than the target of six hundred, which we had put in place. The last two weeks, commissioners, as you may notice from the shadow, as with previous weeks, these are not complete data. We're still, when we receive the test results, then we go back in, enter the data, and so on and so forth. So the numbers will most likely increase in the next couple of weeks and get updated as well. But we are hovering around fifteen hundred with some variation there. So given that it's not, I mean, really what we're seeing is that in the last six weeks or so, testing has pretty much remained consistent. It's not like we're having a surge in doing tests in the community where it's affecting identification of the cases in the community also. Now, this is the second metric which the school systems look at closely and all of us look at, even as parents, I look at very quickly, frequently to make sure that we're making positive progress here. We are seeing a very good low positivity rate in our county. Even two weeks ago, though, the numbers are not complete yet, it was below one percent, which is exceptional. And so many congrats to our community for the choices that they're making. And just their.
Well, you know, the other thing, though, too, and this is where it gets into all this stuff, is, as we've talked about at each meeting, like, well, how many of these are people coming in for procedures? You wouldn't, you know, as we increase the number of people getting tested for procedures or, or whatever, then you would think the positivity would go down. Because if it's, we're not testing people we think are sick. We're testing people to make sure they're not sick. And so you would think the positivities would be going down like this. Whereas earlier in the pandemic, the people who were getting tested were really sick. And so that's why they were getting tested. So it'd be interesting to break this out where, I mean, not that it'd be good news for us necessarily, but it would be interesting to see if, what's the positivity rate of the people that were actually sick? That'd be interesting.
Yeah, the, okay. You're, I think you're, you're spot on in terms of your observation from earlier on in the pandemic, where we had limited tests. So really, there were strict guidelines on who was being tested. And of course, the positivity was going to be higher. I mean, in some places, it was up to fifty percent positivity rate, I recall. Whereas now, we are in a much better situation where we're not only testing the, sort of those with clinical symptoms, but also some of the asymptomatic cases, as well as perhaps pre-op cases or routine testing that's being done in some of the long-term care facilities. So, so you're right, that does affect the positivity rate, Commissioner.
But our positivity was never that high, Nahad. If you look back on one of the charts, it's a small little line when it was two oh three tests, one hundred eighty-five. It's, you can hardly tell the line. So I don't believe our positivity was ever, did you say fifty percent?
Not, not in our community, Commissioner. I was saying.
Well, I know, but we're, we're talking about Deschutes right now, so I'm going like, nah. You know, I know the state positivity cumulative is four point six today. The state positivity. The state positivity for last week was five-point-six. It jumped up a bit. But even the state positivity has been following, so... Because it has to get under five in order for our schools to open.
Five from the state.
Right, for the whole state. So, yeah, so the... And that's on a weekly basis, not on a cumulative basis. I learned that lesson yesterday.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Commissioners. You're right, you're right. Our numbers never went that high, thank God. And the rate was never that high. You're right, yeah. But this slide is... I'm sharing this slide, which is the percent of cases first identified through contact tracing, which is again another key piece of our containment strategy, which is contact tracing, which helps with identifying new cases and containing spread of this virus. So around a third of all of our cases in Deshute County have been categorized by the team as having first been identified as a case through contact tracing. So that's really an impressive effort in ensuring that we're containing this virus. We jump on a case very quickly, within twenty-four hours. We try to identify as many exposed individuals as possible, and we get in touch with them. We provide support, wraparound services. And importantly, we encourage them to contain or quarantine themselves so that they don't potentially infect others. And that's a really key piece of the strategy in containing this virus. And the other...
Congratulations. That's, you know, congratulations to the people that are doing the contact tracing. I brag about them all the time to other people, about how good they are.
You're welcome to brag about them right now, too. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Go ahead and brag right now.
Yeah, that's good. No, I think it's something to really be proud of, that they're doing, and thankful for, that they're doing such a hard work.
Well, and it's a skill that got matured pretty quick. I'm sure there's data systems behind it, the phone calls, just the demeanor on the phone, you know, the dedication to listening to what's going on. So, yeah, congratulations and thank you very much for the contact tracing crew.
And I have a story to share right now about what could go wrong when we don't have good cooperation necessarily from the community. So I have to say, vast majority of people in our community cooperate, and I thank them for that. And really, people feel a sense of responsibility, and it's their duty to, they feel that to themselves, to their families, to their community for cooperating. So thank you. Commissioner, and before telling the story, though, Commissioner Henderson, this sixty percent here is really the cases who have been identified through clinical evaluation and routine surveillance and other methods beyond, you know, what I just mentioned in terms of contact tracing.
Okay, great.
So here's the story, really, of not only to demonstrate the importance of containment and contact tracing, but what basically could go wrong if we don't get adequate or sufficient cooperation. It's a bit long, but I'll go through it quickly. Basically, our communicable disease team began investigation of a positive COVID-19 case who was not very forthcoming with information about those who had been in close contact. This is while he was contagious. He also denied working while he was sick. So the original case was later identified as a source of exposure for at least one of his coworkers who tested positive the following week. The coworker ended up passing it to another staff member at work. The three coworkers ended up infecting at least ten other people in their households and exposed dozens more. It is very likely that if the original case had either not gone to work when he was starting to feel sick or if he had been willing to assist the investigation, that everyone associated could have been kept safe from exposure and infection. So due to the cooperation of the coworkers, and kudos to them, and the willingness of the employer to work with Deshute County Case Investigators, further control measures were instituted in order to prevent greater spread of COVID. So this is really a story of both those who are really willing to participate and cooperate and have a sense of ownership and have bought into the response, and those who are choosing differently and what could happen or transpire as a result. A quick slide on the hospitalization admissions. As of this, as of yesterday, we have four cases admitted. As of this morning, I believe we have five with the latest data that I've seen. And just a reminder that this is a regional indicator. This is St. Charles Health System for the region, not just Deshute. And the admissions here are not just Deshute residents. But this is still a relevant slide because this is a regional indicator anyway. So it doesn't really matter if the beds are taken by non-Deshute residents or not. If the capacity reaches its threshold, then it's bad news for everyone, whether they live in Deshute or not. So this is...
So are any of those cases Deshutes County, then? Do you know that?
Yeah, we have a couple, Commissioner.
A couple? Like, are you referring to two?
Yes, Commissioner.
Are they ICU?
I believe one might be, Commissioner.
On a ventilator?
That's my understanding, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah, I can double-check on that for you and get back to you.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, Commissioner. So actually, I'm wrapping up with a couple of messaging slides. This is basically your slides. I leave it for you to kindly, again, inform the community about the importance of school immunization and catching up. So you're welcome to chime in at this point, or I can continue.
Continue?
Sure. I mean, it's that time of year. It's good for the community, for all of us, to be reminded that we should check in with our providers, with our pediatricians, make sure we look at the vaccination cards and ensure that our children and ourselves are up to date with our vaccines. This is a really important public health strategy and method in reducing vaccine-preventable diseases. And just to remind the community again that life without vaccines is basically what we are facing today for the last six months or so. So if we didn't have vaccines for measles or for pneumococcus or for pertussis, or, Commissioner, you've always talked about polio, this is the kind of stress that we would be going through pretty much every day if we didn't have those vaccines. So let's make sure that we're not complicating our lives and by facing vaccine-preventable diseases this fall and beyond. And related to that, the flu vaccines are available. I believe one of the main providers for children is also now has flu vaccines available in their clinics. And my kiddos are scheduled now to go and get them this week. I believe, in fact, tomorrow, Friday. All people over six months are eligible. Of course, there are some caveats. And let's make sure that we're not having COVID patients and flu-affected patients competing for the limited resources that we have in terms of our hospital beds and admissions and what have you this fall. So in wrap-up, the key message is, no matter what, no matter the crisis or circumstance, we cannot compromise our values in our community, in our county. We need to continue to be kind and keep up with the great work that all of us are doing. We really need to keep focusing and helping our kiddos get back to school. This is a photo of my kiddos having their distance learning for half an hour behind the computer. It just, I mean, on the one hand, I was happy to see there was something going on. On the other hand, it just broke my heart. They need to go back and attend in-person classes, socialize, and have that experience, in-classroom experience. They're only going to be in first grade once in their lifetime, at least I'm hoping.
So Nahad, I got a question about that based on our previous conversation about, well, we're at twenty cases a week, two of the last three weeks. And you're saying, well, we could make a strong case. Is there a, is there somebody making it? Because our positivity is so low, is there somebody in our communities now making that case that we should be able to open on a certain date for, you know, kids past third grade? I mean, it looks like we're meeting the tests for the younger ones. But is there... I mean, I've never heard about what's the mechanism or who's the advocate would say we could make a great case. Is that you or the school district or...
Actually, Representative Halt wrote a letter that was printed in the Ben Bulletin, clearly pointing out the inequities and what's going to happen with the kids that don't have access to the pod.
So we could, if she did it, she's a state legislator, but she's not... So she's as a candidate, you know, she's... So we could do it, you're saying, that we could advocate for it. But there's no official person that's in charge of advocating for Ben Lepine schools to open, or do you know?
Well, I did hear that they were considering it. I know that originally, only sixty-three percent of the teachers felt comfortable in going back in the classroom. But then, when speaking to someone whose children go to St. Francis, they said, just think of the workers in the markets. You know, the worker in Safeway that worked for months there. And, you know, they were exposed, perhaps.
No, yeah, and I get...
And it's like, teachers can, you know...
Yeah, so, but what I'm saying, you're saying there's teachers over here. We've got an elected official here. Is there somebody that... He said, well, that we could make a strong case because we're at twenty, which is really close to ten over the last three weeks. Is there somebody lined up to make that case officially for the school district? Or is the, does anybody... And I don't know. I'm just asking, is the school board deciding it? Or is, or how are they...
Who says...
I see that there's a case to be made, but who... And I, we could make it, but we're just... But we're lobbyists. We're not, we're not in charge of schools. And so we could lobby for whatever we want. But my point is, is the school system, is there somebody there that Nahad knows about or maybe one of you know about that's doing this?
I was on the Zoom call yesterday with Curtis Scholl from Sister School. We were talking about opening up the schools and how the numbers have been so low. And yet, because last week, the weekly state positivity was over five percent, you know, High Desert ESD was a bit concerned that, okay, if they go, you know, if they go back in, what if the numbers trend higher? But I make the case when I have my weekly calls with Leah Horner from the governor's office. And when I have a call with the governor, I say, really, we need our kids back. They need to have in-the-classroom learning. Did your kids get to go to kindergarten, Nahad? Are they now in...
They did, Commissioner, but overseas.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so this would be in the classroom in Oregon, then? We want them in that classroom.
So that, yeah, Thursday...
Yeah, I'm happy to just briefly respond to this, Commissioner Henderson. So first of all, in terms of the strategic guidance and direction that the school systems are getting, pretty much ODE in collaboration, close collaboration, with OHA and governor's office. They're working together, but OED is the one that's providing direction to the school systems. And at the operational level, Commissioner, our team, we have two or three staff who are spending daily, they're spending time on a daily basis working with the school systems, reviewing plans, guidelines, providing guidance and assistance. So we are very much involved at the operational level and helping basically make the wheels turn. I did receive an email from the school system yesterday, which demonstrates that the numbers that they're seeing and the trend that they're seeing is affecting their decisions. The email indicated that they'll be opening schools for in-person classes in a hybrid format earlier than initially expected. So certainly, they're looking at the numbers closely. They're getting guidance, strategic and operational, from all relevant parties. And I'm convinced that they're trying to do their best to make the right decision that works for pretty much everyone involved, families, children, teachers, administrators. But it's tough. It's really a tough position to be in. I'm just excited that they're going to open up earlier.
To clarify what you're saying, you think that the Oregon Department of Education and maybe through some consulting with Oregon Health Authority and with local health departments like ours is working with individual school districts to approve their reopening plans? Is that kind of a summary of what you think's going on, or...
Well, they're providing guidelines to the schools where, and their expectations around the development of plans for opening, not just for reopening, but of course, it would include the testing and any outbreaks that they might have and what have you. Those plans come to the local health authorities, where staff review them. We don't have a role in approving those plans, but certainly, we have a role in providing technical inputs into those plans. And from there, then, it's taken to up the chain of command for approval and so on and so forth.
So is this a, you know, we're familiar as Commissioners with the reopening plans that we worked on for the state about reopening the economy. Is that kind of what these look like? That each school district has a reopening plan? That multi-page or...
I think that's a really, I think that's a fair analogy, Commissioner. That's a really good analogy that you just made. Yes, it's analogous to the work that you had to undertake and the difficult decisions you had to make, given the numbers and the capacity and so on and so forth, and coming up with the plan and the metrics and putting in the resources. Yes, that's a very fair analogy.
And you think that it's the Oregon Department of Education that ultimately says, yes, Ben Lepine School District can reopen on such-and-such a date?
Well, I can't speak to the intricacies of their decision-making, ODE and the school system, specifically, Commissioner. I just know that there is a strong consultation or consultative process. And I do think some schools have a level of freedom depending on the circumstances in their local situation or legal context. But I can't really speak to more details than that in terms of how the decisions are made, specifically between ODE and the school system.
Well, the, one of the issues, Nahad, is the fact that the Oregon child is in school one year less than the rest of the country because we have the shortest school year. And I just see our Oregonians falling further behind. I know I saw that friends of mine had their triplets going to high school in Maine. They were getting on a bus and going to high school. I know that St. Francis here is open. I know that a religious school in Baker County opened up a couple of weeks ago. They had just under, it was K through twelve, under a hundred students. But they were able to open up. And I just feel like, you know, our public schools... Gosh, we, I mean, really, you look at your children and you know, they need to get in the classroom, too. You just, you, you don't, you want to limit the amount of screen time kids have in front of the computer. And by doing all this Zoom training, you know, it's totally against what's really best. Not all kids can learn that way. And it really does help to have teachers. That's why teachers are some of the most inspiring people that you'll meet in your lifetime. You'll remember what they say, you know, forever. So anyway, I think whatever we can do to get our schools open would be so appreciated.
No, I share those sentiments, Commissioners. I really do share those sentiments, both not really in my capacity as necessarily public health director, but really as a parent of twins, six years old, who are experiencing first grade for the first time. And this is not how it should be experienced. So it's a tough situation to be in. Fortunately, the numbers are down or going down. We're making the right choices. And now we're putting ourselves in a position to have some in-person classes. So that's what I'm grateful for right now. And it's really a cause and effect, right? It's not just randomly happening. It's because of the decisions we're all making collectively. Just to wrap up, maybe the messages, because I know I've taken too much of your time, but I'm grateful for that, really. Traveling seems to have contributed to some of the spread of COVID-19, at least in September. We know it did earlier on in the pandemic, too. But as Commissioner, of course, Henderson said, let us see more data to make stronger conclusions. But nevertheless, if anyone is traveling, they should consider the risks associated and mitigate those risks so that they can protect themselves and their loved ones. And of course, back-to-school immunization and flu, please put those, have those, please do consider immunization and flu vaccines so that we don't have a complicated fall more than it's already complicated.
Right.
So we're going to get through this because we're Deshute United, caring and smart. And just to wrap up with a quiz, I don't know if Whitney's there and if any community members have responded to this. But I can give the answer, or you can give the answer? Anyone interested? So it's a trick question, right? It's talking about only two, but really, it's all three. it's all three metrics which have to be met. So that's, that's the quiz. So the answer in this case would be false. So thank you, Commissioners, again, for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Nahad. Okay, we really need to immediately pull up Nathan. I believe he's got another something on his schedule. I'm so sorry, Nathan, for the wildfire update. Is he, is he still available?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you, Nathan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Sorry, we ran over a bit.
Yeah, that's okay. I still have a little bit of time. I've gotta get down to another place here in Eugene, but I'll, I'll, I'll give you an update. I believe Ed Keith and Dr. Conway also have some information, but if you'd like, I'd be happy to start.
Please do start.
And I apologize, I'm gonna leave my video off because I'm operating on my cell phone, so. It seems to work a little better if I do that. Well, good morning. I think the, the plan today was for me to just talk a little bit about highlight, about what Deschutes County is doing to support other counties throughout the state of Oregon. And just kind of launch, I think Ed will have a little bit more information on specific fires, but I would say that multiple counties were affected by, by a number of large fires that ravaged multiple parts of the state, beginning really on, or at least the significant fire growth occurred, starting on Labor Day and through the night. And those counties affected significantly were Jackson, Douglas, Lane, Lynn, Marion, Clackamas, and Lincoln Counties. And we, we've been supporting several of those counties, either virtually or in-person with resources, time, and assistance. I'll give a, just a high-level overview and then answer questions. So, really, our assistance started significantly about 2:00 in the morning on Tuesday, last Tuesday, I think it was September 8. And received a call from the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office indicating that there was significant fires, growth on the Beechy Creek Fire in Marion and Lynn Counties, that was impacting the San Am Canyon, as well as a fire in the McKenzie River Valley near Blue, or between McKenzie Bridge and Blue River in the Rainbow area, and that a number of citizens were, or community members were potentially cut off, and that were evacuating possibly east. So we, working with the fairgrounds, was able to open the fairgrounds within probably about an hour, get the fairgrounds lights turned on, gates open, and bathrooms open, and be able to receive folks to, that had evacuated, and provide them at least a safe place to be until we could get assistance from Red Cross to support them. And that, that actually went rather smoothly, considering the circumstances, and really, a big shout out to Farr and Expo for all the support that they've done. Since then, Farr and Expo has continued to host that temporary evacuation point, which has been a, a receiving area for evacuees to check in with the Red Cross and get shelter support, as well as information. The, the Farr and Expo has also been supporting some campers that evacuated with RVs and were able to utilize the, the RV park, as well as some, I think even just camped in the parking lot temporarily. I believe all of the evacuees in Deschutes County are currently in hotel rooms, and tremendous response statewide from American Red Cross. And they've been really doing yeoman's work on getting evacuees or people that have been displaced because of the fires into hotel rooms and taking care of their basic needs and food and, and health needs. And we've had opportunities to speak with a number of, of members of different counties, and they've all been just very pleased with not only the Red Cross's support and how they've been treated, but also of our community's support. And so I think that is a true testament to our community members and their desire to serve and help others. We do have, at one point, I believe we had, I know we had members of Douglas, Lane, Lynn, Marion, and Clackamas and Lincoln Counties in our county taking refuge. So, in addition to that, Sheriff's Office has been supporting about three counties specifically, and that's Lane with myself, as well as Haley Rich from our office that's focusing on recovery, is over on the ground here in Lane County currently. We also have, have a number of our command staff, as well as patrol deputies supporting Lane County, just in coordination, administrative support, emergency operations center support, as well as patrolling the east end of Lane County, because of the impacts to the traffic and communications infrastructure, which has made it a challenge. We also sent, for three days, we sent deputies to Jackson County to support extra patrols in communities evacuated by fire. We've also provided logistical support with transporting fuel and other critical items to eastern Lane County to keep basic critical first responder operations functional. Road Department also responded initially, oh, and I also have to apologize, we also had our search and rescue team over on Tuesday, the 8th, to support evacuations at campgrounds, as well as the community, parts of the community of McKenzie Bridge and the Blue River area. Our road department came over and assisted us significantly on Tuesday with route clearing. A number of evacuation routes were blocked by down trees and power lines and power, and, and telephone and power poles. And certainly, in the event of additional evacuations, we wanted to ensure that those routes were cleared. And then the road department has also continued to assist our program, the emergency management program here at the Sheriff's Office with some logistical support, since our staff has been either virtually or physically redeployed to assist Lane County. They've been assisting us with moving PPE and, and other items to the fairgrounds and, and around as needed. Health, Health Services has also been a significant player in supporting us. I, and I'll let Dr. Conway, if he wants to go into detail, but I do know that they have been, they have an agreement in place to assist with the contact tracing in Lane County as needed. They've also been a significant partner with us, assisting in cases where evacuees needed language support, or culturally appropriate messaging and translation services. And then also, behavioral health has been a, a, a great asset and resource to assist us with folks that certainly are challenged by these circumstances. Also, the, the position that the board approved to assist public health and the Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Program with trade contact or testing and PPE has taken on a, on a, a greater role in PPE coordination since we've, we're stretched a little thin, and so that's thankful. Our chaplains have also been great to assist folks evacuated by the fire and to assist us. And 911 has been on standby to support numerous public safety answering points throughout the county with, with dispatcher call-taking services and, and, but I don't believe that they have been specifically called on to respond as of yet. I just wanna kind of give a little context. All of these fires, significant infrastructure damage impacting roads, communications, utilities, as well as a number of the responders and critical, or people that have, you know, really, response or critical response or recovery roles have been personally affected. And, and so I think that has also contributed to the need for other counties to support these counties in need. And really, to be honest with you, I'm just very thankful for our, our elected leadership and our, and the leadership here at Deschutes County to allow us the opportunity to serve our neighbors. And so thank you for that. And I'll be happy to take any questions. I, I just don't wanna run over on what Ed and Dr. Conway have to say.
I have a question.
What?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Nathan, thanks for your report today, and all the work you're doing over in Lane County. That's great to hear. Can you give us any ideas of things that, beyond just county staff people helping, that the, you know, the residents and citizens of Deschutes County may be able to do going forward? I mean, this is, appears we're just getting started with the, kind of the emerg, I mean, maybe it's, well, it's still an emergency in some ways, but the long-term costs and injuries and damage and stuff. And what could we be doing, or should we be thinking about going forward as a county of 200,000 people that wanna help as well?
That, that's a great point, Commissioner, and, and thanks for asking. I, I think, I think our initial kind of guttural reaction, or, or initial reaction is always just wanna throw, jump in and help. And, and there's been a number of grassroots, as well as community-based organizations have done just that. I think as moving forward, some of the critical needs are going to be really financial support for these communities. And, and, you know, I believe all the counties significantly affected by these fires did receive what's called an individual assistance declaration by, by President Trump through FEMA, which will open up some pathways to financial and other assistance, but that will not even begin to meet, likely will not begin to meet the financial burden placed on community members in these affected counties. So, there are a number of organizations that are standing up resources, and, and I'll make sure that we get that information to Whitney, and maybe advertise that on our Facebook, or on our social media and our website to, to direct people to the recovery funds. And then also, I just wanna point out that the Red Cross had made significant investments financially to house displaced persons and to feed them, and, and that's been truly remarkable. So, you know, obviously, financial donations to Red Cross, certainly, the Red Cross, what the Red Cross does for our communities constantly, whether it's a house fire, responding to open shelters in times of wildfire or other natural disasters, is, is certainly their a critical partner to us, and we certainly appreciate them. And I, I think moving forward, there will be a lot of information available. Each county will probably have a slightly different recovery framework and how they move forward in recovery. And, and I think as those become made aware of, I, I think we can utilize our position as, as leaders in the community and, and as a, a place where our community members go to for information to, to really spread that message and, and to be able to connect people to the right place to assist, to help. And then also, there's oppor, there's chances that people will maybe permanently relocate to, to our county and, and may need a continued assistance as, as this moves forward. I think, to your point, I, this will be months and years of recovery for these communities, and, and wanting to make sure that we recognize it's a marathon and not a sprint. So, thank you for that comment and question.
Nathan, I actually started the meeting out this morning with the 800 number for FEMA for the individual disaster assistance. And let me repeat that number again, in case someone just picked up our Facebook live stream. It's 1-800-621-3362. Or you can go to their website, which is disasterassistance.gov. And I did call the number, and it did seem pretty easy to work through it. They knew I was calling from Oregon, and immediately, yes, I was being channeled to where I needed to go. So, that, you know, thank you for mentioning that again. I know it's probably not, it is definitely, it's a marathon, or maybe it's a 100-mile race, honestly. To, no, really, to get through all this, to, you know, to, you know, recoup, re, you know, rebuild, whatever you need to do. It's, it's going to be an enormous undertaking for so many people.
So, one question.
Thank you, Commissioner.
One question, Nathan. So, just what are the bullet points of the current status? As in, are any of the fires starting to be contained, or are their structures being lost currently? And then, yeah, just evaluation of damage, too, just kind of the high points.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a great, I think Ed will have a better.
Okay, maybe Ed, okay, yeah, yeah.
But I would say that, yeah, I think Ed will, Ed.
Ed will have that, okay.
Given the current situation on those fires, yep. I can speak mostly to the Holiday Farm Fire, because that's what I've been involved in mostly.
Yeah, it's, it's all active right now, I know.
I know, it's just incredible the amount of land that these fires have consumed in our beautiful state, so.
Yeah, I, just a little bit of context. I heard at a cooperators meeting today on the Holiday Farm Fire, the incident commander, Link Smith from the Oregon Department of Forestry, one of the teams, described that there's, and I'm not gonna say, over 250 miles of fire edge on the, on the Holiday Farm Fire. And I think there's a little bit more of that, but I wanna make sure I'm not overstating it. And so, really, if you think of something along the lines of trying to build fire line from Medford to Portland, and so I think that's, really, put, put that into context. And that's one fire on the landscape here in Oregon right now.
Yeah.
Well, the good news is, your wife had her birthday, wasn't in August, so, you know, it's, it's like, will we see you again? I hope, you know, I hope they can take, you know, we can get a little rain and actually make a huge difference over there. Do you know, do you have rain in the forecast at all, Nathan, in Eugene?
In Eugene, there is some rain in the forecast. I've got the forecast here. I think starting potentially tomorrow and Friday, they're looking at kind of a, more of a, a precipitation component in the weather. But there is also a chance of thunderstorms. So, you know, there, there's some challenges with precipitation, a little bit of precipitation without thunderstorms is good. Too much precipitation or thunderstorms can also pose some challenges. So, we're kind of sitting here with our fingers crossed, hoping we get the right equation of precipitation and, and higher humidities, which will certainly help the firefighters.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us, Nathan. Any more questions for Nathan? So, Ed, do you, do you wanna let us know where we're at, then, with the fires? Be safe, Nathan.
All right, thank you, I will.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, good morning. Still got a few minutes left in the morning. Ed Keith, Deschutes County Forester here. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, if that's all right, and give you a quick rundown of some of the more significant fires on the, on the current incident map. And I'm going to give you a rundown of the fire, the location, the acres, the percent contained, and some of the estimated losses to date. And I'll run through those at a kind of a high level fairly quickly. Just wanna give you an overall, all look at these fires. And, and what I would say for those that are watching the meeting live or on Facebook, that if you're interested in looking at these in any more detail, this, this website that I have pulled up, centraloregofire.org is a really good place to go. We, there's a, a running news feed of all those fire updates as they come out, that are all posted in one central location, as well as both this incident map that I have up and the air quality map, all on one website. And people are finding this website. We've had close to 600,000 views on that in the last 30 days. So, it's, it's a good place to go for information. So, with that, I'm just gonna dive in to this map specifically, and just take a real quick trip around the state, high-level overview of each of these incidents. It's gonna start with the Echo Mountain Fire. This one's near Lincoln City. It's currently 2,500 acres, 40% contained, and estimated 100 structures lost on that one. Then I'll move over to the Riverside Fire. Riverside is near Estacada. It's about 136,000 acres, reported as 3%, contained this morning, 53 structures lost on the Riverside Fire. For the Beechy Creek Fire, that is, basically runs between Detroit and, and Lyons in the San Am Canyon and north, Beechy Creek is listed 191,000 acres, 20% contained, and unfortunately, 1,288 structures currently reported as, as destroyed on that fire.
Do you know what the house breakdown is, Ed? You said 1,288?
I don't. That's just total, it's reported out as total structures. I, I would guess that a fair amount of those are not houses, but a, a lot of them are going to be houses. Well, we don't have that level of detail at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
The Lyons Head Fire, which stretches basically from the Warm Springs Reservation to the east, all the way down to Detroit, is 184,000 acres, reported as 10% contained this morning, and has 280 structures lost, including several of those that are in Detroit. this morning, and has 280 structures lost, including several of those that are in Detroit. Going south to the fire that Nathan was mentioning, the Holiday Farm Fire, which is in the McKenzie River Drainage, it's currently about 167,000 acres, 8% contained, with 424 structures lost. Unfortunately, this is a fairly long list, but I'm going to keep these going here. So, the Archie Creek Fire in the North Umquah Drainage, near the community of Glide, is 125,000 acres, 20% contained, with 112 structures lost.
Ed, you don't have the fatalities per fire, do you?
I've just got a total fatalities confirmed, as of the end of the day, yesterday was 10. There were two new fatalities identified yesterday, but there were also two that were previously identified as fatalities, that were then identified as actual animals that were lost. So, I believe we're still sitting at 10, unless there's been recent news in the last couple hours. There are additional 22 people confirmed missing, and so I do expect that to continue to go up. Okay, so continuing south, the South Obenchain Fire, that's between Eagle Point and Shady Cove here. South Obenchain is approximately 32,000 acres, 20% contained, with 80 structures lost. The Alameda Drive Fire, which burned from Ashland to Medford and really impacted the communities of Phoenix and Talent, is now, or was reported at right around 2,800 acres, I believe. It is, the good news on that one is, it was reported yesterday as 100% contained, so that one is, the firefight on that is essentially over, and they'll be going to more recovery. There is unfortunately 600 structures lost in that fire. This Slater Fire that started in California by Happy Camp did burn into Oregon, it's listed as 137,000 acres, including about 30,000 acres in Oregon, it's 10% contained. There are 150 structures reported as lost on that fire, I believe most, if not all those are in California. Moving over to the east side of the state, we have the 242 Fire, which is near the community of Chillicothe. 242 is 15,000 acres, 21% contained, with 36 structures lost. And then finally, I will move over to the Paisley area where the Bertain Fire is still very actively burning, listed at just shy of 40,000 acres, 17% contained with one structure lost. So, by all totals, if we looked at any one of those fires individually, that would be probably a record-breaking fire for the state in terms of structures lost, not to mention the 10 fatalities that we already mentioned. That totals just under 900,000 acres in just the fires that I listed. There's a few other smaller fires that are on the map as well, so very significant.
Do you know if the Birch Creek Fire, if they've put it out, the one that's in Umatilla Union County on the line? It's up in the sky.
I didn't find any information on that, Commissioner. Most fires that are under 100 acres don't make the situation reports, I haven't been able to track that down.
I'll just, I just know it was 50 acres, but I was, you know, I was just afraid that if it explodes, if they don't get it out at 50.
Ed, what was the number of structures in the Riverside Fire?
Riverside, 53 structures have been listed as lost.
And what about the Lincoln Echo, Echo whatever it's called?
That was 100 structures.
100 structures, so that adds up to just shy of 3,000 structures, by my math, I added 2,974 structures. To my knowledge, the most significant fire before this event was the Canyon Creek Fire, where somewhere in the neighborhood of about 42 homes were lost on that. So, if that puts it in, it puts it in pretty stark perspective, the amount of loss that we've experienced in just shy of a week in Oregon due to these fires.
You know, one, I don't know if anybody's been down to the Alameda Fire from here, I know we've been over to some of the other fires, or county people have, but I, there was a video done by a helicopter flight, a 30-minute helicopter flight over that fire that was really amazing. It was, you know, it was basically that, from Ashland all the way to Medford, and it showed how many of the homes and buildings had been burnt, and it was, you know, it isn't a terrain that looks like Paradise, California with trees everywhere, it's kind of a bare area, really. I mean, it's, to see that many homes was really shocking.
Well, the Canyon Fire, which you just mentioned in Grant County, I know that Commissioner Palmer lost three homes in that fire. I remember it was just running down the canyon, and he actually almost lost his life. So, he's been very concerned about what's happened all over our beautiful state, so. That was a bad one.
Couple of questions I had, Ed, from the information, I've been kind of following the, this numbers kind of like you're doing. One thing that I've learned over the last four years is that containment is a, I always think 5 or 10% containment doesn't sound like very, very good, except that means absolutely kind of contained, and there's quite a, usually that means there's another percentage that's kind of contained, so it's a better, for people that don't know how this information really, what it reflects, it's actually better, you know, if it's 10% contained, it may be 40% close to, you know, there's, that's one thing, and I assume that's true in these fires as well.
Correct, yes. So, you know, for several days last week, we were seeing 0% containment on most of these fires. We are starting to see those percentages rise. That containment percent typically represents, you know, the incident management team's estimation of fire line that is, they feel extremely confident that that fire is not going to cross that fire line again. There's more than that as far as fire line that's built, but there's still work to be done to secure that fire line and really feel confident that that fire isn't going to cross over those lines. So, I do expect, especially with the rain, I was going to again mention that we are expecting rain to start on the west side tomorrow, and a more significant amount on Friday. So, that will help out with the containment numbers, as well as the resources that are continuing to increase on this fire and get those fire lines, not just built, but actually plumbed with hose lays and mop up starting on each of those fires.
And I actually want to commend the people that completely contained, the Green Ridge Fire, that happened right before we had those horrific winds on September 7th, when, well, actually, the Lyons Head Fire blew up on Saturday, September 5th, because I can see that fire from my house, and it blew up completely Saturday, starting about noon, maybe even late morning. But the fact that the Green Ridge Fire was actually out was totally a blessing, because, you know, it would have just, it was just, you know, all their right together, and it would have made such a monster, you know, if they would have combined. So, thank you to those people that worked on that fire, they really got that stopped at the right moment.
Another question, Ed, I had was with the amount of firefighters that you hear, I mean, some of the reports will say how many people are in each fire, do you have any idea of how many personnel that are fighting fires, so to speak, are from, are from Deschutes County or in these various fires? Does somebody keep track of that kind of thing, or?
Somebody does. I just have the gross numbers, I certainly don't have a breakdown of crews or companies or personnel from Deschutes County, but I would say that there are several companies based here in Deschutes County that I'm certain are contributing a fair amount of personnel to those fires, but I don't have any exact numbers on breakdowns. I would say that the Lyons Head Fire still continues to be the one with the most staff. They're reporting 1,113 people, some of the other fires have anywhere between, looking at the report here, 783 on the Holiday Farm, then it goes down from there, Riverside and Beechey Creek just have both over 500 personnel on those fires.
How many dozers are at Lyons Head now? Do you have that on your report?
Let's see, I do not have a reported dozer, no, I've got cruise engines and helicopters.
Okay, well, are the helicopters flying today, though? I thought that the smoke was such a problem.
It's been, that's been a challenge with the smoke being this thick. They've been taking advantage where they can, but that's been relatively limited up until this point.
Oh, gosh.
Thank you very much for the updates, good, you know, kind of have that bigger picture, high level.
If I could just close with just a couple other points of things that people can look for coming up from Deschutes County. One is that I just want to take this point to say that we are offering community fuel reduction grants, you know, for a preparedness and fire prevention standpoint, those are still open through September 30th, so communities that have a plan and want to do fuel reduction, we are offering that, and that's to prevent these types of things from happening in Deschutes County to our communities, so that's an opportunity that's open.
Ed, can they go to the website and pull up the application? Is that possible?
That is available on our website.
Okay, great, so, I know some people I've mentioned it to, so, September 30th, and what is the amount, the maximum amount they can get for their grant?
For each community, the maximum amount is forecasted to be about $2,000. We've got a $20,000 budget this year for those grants.
Great, thank you for mentioning that.
The other thing I was going to mention, just again, real briefly, is that, as you will recall, from several months back, we did convene a wildfire mitigation advisory committee that provided some recommendations on things that Deschutes County might consider in regards to wildfire mitigation. And Community Development has been working with the University of Oregon to come up with a community outreach plan, which is a little bit challenging, obviously, during these times where we can't get together in large groups of public meetings, but I would encourage people to look for opportunities in the next month or two. We'll be asking for the public's input on what they think, which of those recommendations we might potentially move forward with, or make sense for Deschutes County. So, we are, we do take this issue seriously, and have a few things coming up that people can potentially engage with the county on in regards with the fuel reduction grant, that the wildfire mitigation advisory committee recommendations, as well as the Sheriff's Office moving forward with finalizing our long-term recovery plan that Haley Riches has been working on for a few months now. So, just a few things and highlights of things, just to let people know that we are actively working on this issue in Deschutes County.
Ed, do we have fire-free this fall? Do we have those dates?
I do not have those dates yet, but we are planning fire-free for the fall, that will likely be, and it is typically the very end of October and into the first week of November. So, look for those dates here shortly, as we finalize those with Republic Services, and we will be getting a news release out, I'd expect, right here at the end of September.
But I would suggest anyone that has a lot of brush at their property now should take it to the transfer station, because you really don't want to have it sitting there till the end of October. Just keep your properties really clean, take a fresh look at your defensible space, it's really important. If you have any dead bushes around your house, you should take them out now, so you, you know, you don't have to have them over the winter, and start fresh next spring.
And I would say, yeah, just take a moment, needles on the inside corner of a roof in the gutter, on the ground, up under the eaves, I mean, you could take a garbage bag of needles from an optimal location tonight, and possibly, you know, limit the opportunity of that fire starting just from a spark coming down from the sky, so, little bit at a time, all the time.
Yes, constant.
Yeah.
Yeah, you really just have to be very aware, so, thank you, Ed.
I got one more question. Ed, the Fire Mitigation Committee, that's the one we started with about a year ago, looking at the maps, and then looking at the issue of building rules, and so we're going to do some more things with that, is what you're saying?
That's correct, Commissioner. The Community Development Department's really taking the lead on that, but they did receive some funding to engage with the University of Oregon to come up with, just getting more input from the public on, looking at those recommendations and seeing if there's support in the community for those, or thoughts around which one of the, if any of those recommendations are supported by the public, and getting their input through a series of either online events or surveys.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Ed, for, you know, I know, I read, I think I counted like 15, 14 fires in Oregon, and yes, it's really, you've covered 95% of them, so thank you, thank you again for the work this morning. I believe now Dr. Conway wants to talk about health services and smoke and masks, and how to stay healthy at this time.
I'm over now.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'll try to keep this brief, given the time. So, I will, I will share my screen in a moment here, there's, actually, I'll go ahead and share it now. Can you see some slides now?
Yes.
A slide? Great, so, actually, I just want to start out with a point, I didn't want to interrupt Nahad's presentation, so that the school reopening thresholds are written as less than or equal to 10 cases per 100,000, and the 2002 US Census, I'm sorry, the 2020 US Census intercensal estimate for Deschutes County's population is 202,000, so, we actually, as far as I know, we actually are under the line.
So, 20 means we're under that number.
Yes, for both of those weeks that are 20, the two weeks prior, so we're just, we're just skating by those criteria. And OHA does publish once a week, late in the week, a concatenation of all those statistics, along with their overall testing rate, et cetera, so that I'm sure that the school districts are very attentive to that, as is ODE. So, to talk about smoke, and this is very brief, don't worry, it's not 30 slides or something like that, I think I have six or seven slides. Just wanted to talk a little bit about smoke and health, since we've had many questions about that. Air quality is the sort of generic term for that, and we have, I'll mention this website twice, 3W's, deschutes.org/smoke, and there's air quality links, and there's also quite a few tips, I'll go through some of those. And this is a site grabbed from earlier today, and this puts virtually everywhere other than Le Pine as being in the hazardous or worse zone for air. So, the main thing that we worry about, for smoke, we worry about ash, which of course you may see on your car, or your house, your windows. We worry about visible smoke and the irritating effects, but the big health concern is what we call PM 2.5, and that's just the size, that's 2.5 microns in diameter. And just for a sense of scale, this is human hair, this is the finest beach sand, this is the size of particles such as dust, pollen, and mold. So, the challenge with this is 2.5 is so small, that many of the historically even high-end air filters don't capture that very well. The problem with PM 2.5 is it's so small, it can go down into the airways, it can cause inflammation of the smaller tubes, the bronchioles, which can precipitate an asthma attack in someone that's been- which can precipitate an asthma attack in someone that's been, that's had asthma previously. It can cause some damage to the lung, carries a cancer risk and a risk of heart attack. And the mechanism for these latter things is that it's so small, it gets down through the tubes in the lungs and into the air sacs, what we call a V-L-A. And it's so small that it can be actively transported through those air sacs into the bloodstream. So once it's into the bloodstream, the biggest, the biggest problem is carbon. The same way that carbon causes havoc and many other things that we know, but it's essential to human life. Carbon, when it gets in elemental form, black carbon, gets into the bloodstream. It can be very inflammatory and cause havoc and things like blood, blood cells and the lining of, of the vessel. So one of the things we've had a lot of questions about is masks. The masks that we've been recommending, and this has been to, to preserve N95 masks for the people that need them for, primarily for healthcare during COVID. We've been recommending to use a simple cloth mask, and we've talked a lot about this before. It should be dense enough that you don't see through it, but can easily breathe through it. The point of these is to trap respiratory droplets when you cough, sneeze, talk, or yell so that you don't spray someone else with that, which might have virus. And, but it does not protect you from particulate matter and wildlife smoke. It's much too coarse, the filter. An N95 mask, on the other hand, N95 refers to, the N is for non-petroleum, so non-oily. 95 refers to 95% of the particles of 2.5 microns are captured per pass of air through that. So this is good protection. So it protects 95% exclusion if it's properly fitted. And the only cautionary thing for this is these are not for young children and not for frail adults. The best thing is if it's in a work environment that you're already fit-tested. But if not, I'll show you something else in a moment. And anyone that has any concerns about this really should talk to your healthcare provider first before donning a mask. Our main advice is to stay inside. So the right respirator, in this case, would be an N95. It needs to fit reasonably well. And if you go on our site, if somebody's interested in this, then go on our site and you'll see some directions and guidance for that. The important things for protecting your health that apply for everyone is it's very important when the air quality is bad. So that would be orange for people on the color-metric scale. Green is fine for everybody. Yellow means you might want to consider curtailing activity, especially if you have any acute illness or any underlying health problems. Orange, caution. Red, once you get to red and above purple maroon, basically everyone should just stay inside. If you must go outside and you're otherwise healthy, then wearing a mask like an N95 mask we just discussed would be an option. You should stay indoors if you have one. A HIPAA, a High Efficiency Particulate Air Filter, can help a lot. You can make a very cheap substitute for this by taking a box fan, square box fan, and putting a MERV, it's just an efficiency rating, 13 or better air filter. These are available for around $20 at home improvement stores. And you can just put it on the intake side to cover the box fan. And that actually is remarkably effective in filtering the air. You just leave it on, but not while you're not around because it could, it could overheat the fan. Stay hydrated is very important. One of the concerns we have with smoke is that because we have COVID afoot as well, we don't want people drying out or irritating their mucous membranes because it might make you more susceptible. You should not add to the particulate in your house by vacuuming.
We need to mention that. That's very important, not to vacuum. I'll be sure, I'll be sure and tell my husband that I'm not supposed to.
All right, we can't vacuum for a while.
It really mobilizes.
I've objected to it for years.
So have I.
It's also a very handy excuse for chore avoidance, but I won't mention that.
I have a question. I've seen where they say use half a box of baking soda in a crock pot set on high to help with your house. And I actually saw it on a doctor's post yesterday. I was wondering, did you have any opinion on that?
I don't have any opinion on that. I know that baking soda, calcium bicarbonate is useful for odor mitigation. I don't know if it has any efficacy in this, in this problem. We do know, though, that you don't want to add to the air pollution. So if you have a gas stove, too, you want to use that sparingly. You don't want to be burning candles. They mobilize a lot of hydrocarbons, a lot of PM 2.5. And frying and broiling food both mobilize a lot of that, too. If you start feeling difficulty breathing or if you have questions, talking to your healthcare provider or doctor would be good. And then we have a lot of tips at three Ws, deschutes.org forward smoke, including how to make one of those box fan filters and some more detailed background information on how to mitigate and manage smoke in your area. And I do want to point out that this, that we're talking about smoke and it's very important to avoid that hazard. But we don't want to imply any lack of sensitivity to that. The biggest hazard from wildfires is being in wildfires, losing your home or your life, your animals and whatnot. So we're not trivializing that, but this is a very broad exposure for the population. So we're just trying to encourage people to stay safe in this way. And unless there are other questions about that, I will do my best to stop sharing.
I noticed that the Sisters, I was pulling up the highest numbers. Sisters was at 628, I believe it was on Friday. Then the highest they've been at is 525. Primeville was at 400, their highest. And today it looks like Ben, hopefully, it looks like it's going down right at the moment. But it was at 264. So it's still, it's still at a dangerous level.
There are things that help. Hopefully, if it rains, that helps scour the air. You may have noticed that during the middle of the day, even if there's persistent smoke, there's often a dip in the AQI. And that's because, especially if there's no wind, as the air heats up, you get what we call thermal, thermal mixing. So there's some convection that reduces it. So typically, at the night, nights that have still air, when you still have fire inputs, smoke are, is going to be the worst. But this has been very bad. I, you know, I've lived in very air polluted areas such as China. And even in China, the experience in central Oregon and especially in western Oregon, Willamette Valley, et cetera, has been really, would have been something that would give the Chinese a great deal of caution as well. So it really is, there's nothing weak about basically staying inside and hiding from the bad air.
So one thing that interests me is, so where do we get the N95 masks that everybody should be wearing outside? Do we have, because I've never, I'm not clear if we have a stockpile.
Actually, Nathan, I think was going to mention that we do have, we do have a limited inventory that we freed up for requests for this purpose. I do want to reiterate, we really are still trying to preserve N95 masks. So if someone really needs one to do chores outside or to work outside, that's a perfectly reasonable request. There are the industrial-style ones are available in some of the, some of the home improvement stores already. But we do have an inventory of particularly the KN95 masks, which they, there's an issue with the ear loops fitting to provide ideal healthcare worker protection. But I think that those are a good sort of intermediate measure. And I understand that Sergeant Garibay has, has set aside some of those.
I think the KN95s are the ones that were distributed to all the chambers of commerce and a lot of businesses have had access to those. So you're saying, so what's the K stand for, for the N?
Yeah, yeah. And actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Kind of N95.
So if you have any, if you have one of those KN95s, those are, those are reasonably functional, the ones that we distribute. The thing was that because they didn't, they caused kind of a pucker by the ears. They weren't sufficient. The, well, NIOSH provided emergency use for KN95 because of the filtration standard. The K and is just the Chinese equivalent of the American N95. The filtration membrane in those is effective, but they, it was a slight pucker, which NIOSH decided, NIOSH is the part of the CDC that regulates respirators, decided that there wasn't good enough fit. But as far as filtration goes, they're good. And certainly to, for a brief episode, having to work out with smoke. And in checking, there, you'll see instructions, lengths for checking to see how it fits. And you could maybe adapt or adjust it a little bit so you get a bit better fit. So that would be a reasonable compromise for short-term use in the smoke.
So for the public, then, I mean, beyond the county having some, some supply, the public can get these at stores, is what, you think they're available now in a lot of the hardware stores or the?
Yes, but I do want to emphasize, the most important guidance during these episodes of very bad air is to stay indoors. So only people that have chores that must be done, you know, if you have to, if you have to water the horses, if you're in the middle of hay, whatever, then that's an appropriate use. But getting one just for contingent use, especially if it's one of the medical-grade ones, I'm thinking during COVID, that, that really, you really need to have a, a purpose for this use. I think the KN95s, though, that we have the inventory of, it's a very appropriate way to meet that need. And I, and if somebody has trouble finding one readily, then they can get in touch with Sergeant Garibay and the EOC, or failing that, get in touch through the Health Department.
So if the, the particle number is under, what is it, 171? Is that where we're better, it's going to be okay not to wear a mask? What is the level? I know I read a letter from OSHA last week, I believe. And I thought if they said, said it was over like 170, you shouldn't be outside.
I'm trying to get the, the scale up for, for that. And I'll reshare, I'll reshare the screen as I got on this. This one doesn't have the numbers. Let me get the smoke.
What did you think it was? It goes from 170 to 600?
Yeah, Sisters, I think, was the highest in the state last Friday. And the highest max in Sisters was 628, whereas Ben's highest was 525. Primeville's highest was 400. And I think Madgers has been pretty low, too, relatively.
I'm trying to get the.
You're saying there's a number that, below which you're?
Right. OSHA sent out a, a letter last week and said, if you are over, I, it was like 170, I thought. And please, you shouldn't be working outside.
Yeah, I don't remember.
There isn't, there's an AQI, there's an AQI guide on our website. And the, the green is under 50, the yellow, I believe, is 50 to 100, the orange is 100 to 150. And above, above 150, I believe, is when everyone should be cautious, between 100 and 150 AQI.
So it's like 150.
The scale for that is available on all of these sites. I just don't want to take up your time.
Okay. Great. Well, I'll, I'll look it up and.
I think the thing that's amazing, I think in 31 years, I can only remember in 2017, people not working because of smoke. And I can't remember any other times when this was, you know, was brought up, you shouldn't be outside. And I know, you know, people are, people are, yeah, during that, it was really, I think it was the only other time I've seen this kind of smoke where you got quarter-mile visibility and at least locally, so.
We did, Commissioner, we did monitoring during the milling fire for the Sister School District because Kurt Troll had asked us to do it. And we did agree to be prudent to delay opening the high school, which.
I remember that.
Put air handling and air filtration by a week. And Sisters did go over 500 a number of times. And I think that was the year that they canceled Sisters folk as well because of very bad air quality. So, so this does occur here, but this is, this is extraordinary. And certainly the level of the problem throughout the western states, the west coast, Oregon, California, and Washington, to have so much and have such bad air.
Yeah, what I was saying, though, is in 31 years, I think it, it very seldom occurs here. I mean, this is, the, the mill in 17 was another time. But this has really been extraordinary, these two, two summers like this.
Yes, I agree. We're hoping that this is not the new normal.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Conway. Thank you for your slides. Appreciate your, your information this morning. Actually, this afternoon now. Thank you. All right, so we do have other items?
We can do lunch recess.
Okay, so what time should we come back then? I have a 1:30 for the veterans. I need to, I'm going to have to step out for that. So if we come back, what, at 1:15? I can be here for 15 minutes?
So you're going to be done for the rest of the day?
Well, no, I have, there's a, it's a Zoom for the veterans funding that, of course, it's today at 1:30. So I have that. And then I have, I have a meeting with Annette and the, a group later after that.
Don't we have, I mean, I have several other items, but I also, don't we also have a?
Executive.
Executive session?
Yes.
Right, I know.
And.
Take a break for 10 or 15 minutes?
I wanted to get, yeah, I wanted to get a.
Okay, 15-minute break then? How about 20? 20 minutes? Okay, 20 minutes, and then we'll be back into session. So let's, we'll reconvene then at, at 12:45. And then I'll have 45 minutes. That'll be great.
All right, and we are rolling.
Okay, excellent. We're going to reconvene our afternoon meeting, September 16, 2020. And we have other items to bring up.
So I had a couple.
Okay.
One, I was wondering, you know, with the, the fires and the fact that we're not the affected county, what about us making us some kind of contribution to the Red Cross from a county, one of our sources of funding, as some way to help out? Because we're not able to do much other things. I just thought I'd bring that up as another item. Because they're apparently having to house all the people they're housing. Any thoughts on that?
Definitely would be nice. What kind of funding could we attack at this moment? What's available for us, Tom?
Well, Commissioners, you have a couple of different sources of discretionary funding that you could use for a whole range of things for the benefit of, you know, the community, either general fund or unallocated TRT.
That's what I was thinking, unallocated TRT.
I like that. I mean, I'm not thinking of a, I was thinking of a small amount, like maybe $5,000 or something.
What's small?
I was thinking $5,000. That was my initial thought, something like that.
Might want to understand how, how services are flowing. My wife is involved with the Ford Foundation, was on a phone call recently. And there was a mayor from Weed, California, mentioned that there was, you know, benefits available for people, but it took a long time for some things to get in their hands, where it was awkward. So my point is, I wonder if, is Red Cross really just paying outright for all the rooms?
But for how long? And yes.
When I met with them, they said they were going to, that was the best thing they needed the most. Like, they really weren't looking for, people weren't, that are staying in hotels can't really take many material things.
And I'm referring to, is, are people paying for rooms and getting reimbursed, or is Red Cross paying for them?
I think Red, there's, it was actually somebody there paying for the rooms from Red Cross.
Making sure it goes right to that is all I was trying to get to.
Right.
And we could research.
If we give it to the wrong middleman, not middleman, but you know, the wrong.
No, I agree.
It'll take a long time to get to where we intended. That's what I was thinking.
Another would be the Sheriff's Department, you know, they're doing, you can give them money and they're buying.
They're buying cards, and I really like that the best, honestly. They can give them gas cards. They can give them cards for Safeway, for food.
Power of Fund like that, because that's kind of on the crown. Nathan knows, you know, Haley.
Haley's doing it. And I, because she, you know, she's down here from OMAC where they had it so horrifically, what, in '14?
That may be the place to.
I, I think really that would maybe be a safer place, you know, just people need.
I'd be interested in the housing costs, but I don't know how, I'm, I'm with you. I'd want to make sure it gets to pay for the, I mean, maybe we could just literally go out in there and pay for X number of rooms. I mean, we're doing it for the other ways we're doing housing like that.
Reducing the overhead, too, of who's making the decision.
I wonder, do we have anybody that could ask how that's being paid for? And, well, I'd, I'd, I'd move to do something to the sheriff's office now, then, like, you know.
Another $5,000.
$5,000 to those type things? And then we can research if there's anything for, towards housing that we could do? Okay. Okay.
Is there what, staying at the Silver Eight and my place? And then the church is also, the Presbyterian Church.
There's over 200 people, yeah, that there supposedly, that's a lot of money per day.
Somebody in Sisters has given their three-bedroom condo, and three couples are living in it right now.
I'm on my, yeah.
Commissioners, we're happy to work with Nathan on that. He's been kind of our point person. I understand that one of the issues wasn't so much paying for the rooms, but was availability of rooms that they were able to work with. So I worked with Nathan towards the end of last week through COVA to try and to do a reach-out communication to the lodging partners in the rural county. And Nathan had reached out directly to Kevney for Visit Bend, you know, for trying to line up lodging providers that are willing to provide a block rooms for, you know, evacuees. And evidently, the Red Cross is trying to, and this was reported a little bit in the media, keep people together as much as they can from the same community for a purpose of, you know, mutual support and those sorts of things, so.
Well, yeah, Super Eight, I mean, you go there and it's, I mean, I get some pictures, you know, it's just, that's who was there. It was the groups of these, of people from these communities, yeah.
Right. So we're continuing to do that, but we're happy to talk to Nathan directly and see where we can help, you know, either with a, you know, either a direct purchase or a contribution to, might do the most direct and immediate good.
Honestly, I would hope we could do like 5,000 for their lodging and 5,000 for cards for food, gas, essentials, because they've lost everything.
I'm good with that.
I agree, I support that.
And we can start with that and then find out, you know, what? What can we do to help? And if, you know, how long are they going to be here? And I know housing is in such demand.
There could be a pretty positive message about transient room tax being reinvested in people in time of need.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's really good. So the second item I had was, there was an email, I think I forwarded it to people, about, that the Health Department had given advice to Richard Coe or someone that were, they're suggesting we don't support Halloween this year. And I'm like, before the Health Department does that, I think we should have a bigger discussion about what is, is there a county position on Halloween? And, because I, I just think it's kind of, it's a big deal, Halloween is, and it's a big deal publicly. The people are talking about in other communities, but I don't think it should just come out of a Health Department. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, no, and that was in the media update last night. And honestly, we probably could have been a little more descriptive in how we worded that. And the editorial actually came out in today's paper, I don't know if you've seen that, but it was.
No, I haven't.
The quote attributed to Dr. Conway in the article is that, you know, we haven't developed any, any formal guidelines or directives, neither the state nor we had locally. I mean, it was kind of, in general, you know, a word of caution in terms of traditional-type trick-or-treating. But he did say in there that there may be other ways to do trick-or-treating. And that's really what it was centered on, it wasn't the holiday in general, it was just on trick-or-treating.
I don't know, the point is that we ought to be in the loop.
Yeah.
That's what my, that's what my point is. I don't know if the other Commissioners agree, but I just, this isn't just, you know, the advice is supposed, we're the health authority, and I just think we should be in the loop on this stuff. And especially on big events like this, that, you know, stores are stocked with Halloween stuff. So are we going to, are we going to cancel it in Deschutes County this year? I mean, it's, we ought to be talking about it here before it's talked about in the paper, is what I'm saying. I don't say that about everything, I mean, he's in the paper a lot about all his thoughts. But even, you know, I'm just saying, there's some things I think that are public issues that we ought to be in the loop on.
I hear you.
And if I hadn't brought it up, we wouldn't be, so.
Alert Health, you know, perhaps as next week's COVID update, we can have a conversation there or individually, or however you, you would like. But as a starting point, we'll, we'll plan on next week.
Well, and, I mean, this is a community, event, holiday, social thing. You know, I do support if our Health Director has guidance or thoughts about what's prudent. But I don't think of ourselves as Deschutes County giving a thumbs up or a thumbs down to an event like that. I mean, that's just society, that's community, that's, we're part of it, we're not driving a holiday.
But I just think, you know.
Some communities in the country are.
Well, so I would, I'd advocate for us staying away from it.
That's why I wanted to bring it up at this level. What do we, what is our role with things like this here in Deschutes County?
Yeah, so that's how I would approach it, you know, the fact that we're not driving it. It's, you know, the retail pressure on these things is amazing, which is what you referred to.
Well, I'm not pressured by retail, I'm just saying it's a big thing.
No, I, yeah.
The public thinks it's a big thing, families.
Retail thinks it's a big thing.
It is a lot of.
Yeah, so I, yeah, we could talk about it, but yeah, I don't think, there's not a leadership opportunity there, I don't think, other than.
Well, we're having, but we're having a leadership by.
Talking about it now, you're saying?
By, well, somebody that works for the county is having a leadership position on this. Without, and I just think we, that's, yeah. So your feeling is we shouldn't take any position?
I actually asked my husband, the doctor, this morning about it. He's a doctor, he was a doctor. And he said, well, that might be a good idea. And he's usually been pretty proactive, you know, maybe he'd say a different thing when I ask him tomorrow, you know. You know, people going door-to-door, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Three feet to get the candy and.
There's a discussion there, for sure.
Well, I just love that one of the markets here in town, you can actually take your used bags in, and they will touch them and fill them for you. Now you go to another market and you can't bring your bag in the door.
Oh, I know.
So, you know, I, there's such a cross-section of COVID.
That happened to me, I had my bag under my arm and I was walking in and they're treating me like a criminal. I'm like, what am I supposed to do here?
You're trying to recycle. Oh, my gosh, he's got his bag, this is really bad.
Yeah, it's funny.
But there are markets you can go to with your bag.
Yeah, and they're excited to take them.
Yeah, and they're like, hey, you know what, it doesn't really stick there, so, yeah, I know, it's, it's been fascinating. Is anything else?
I just wanted to bring it up that we should have a discussion about it.
Okay. And then, can I bring up something really quickly? A couple of months ago, as you noticed, Katie Condit had moved, I believe, to Tacoma. She was on the COIC board. And per the bylaws that they had from 1971, the board was appointments by, three appointments were from Deschutes County, and one is a representative of timber and wood products, one is, and she represented the unemployed and underemployed for Deschutes County. They were appointed by their respective county commissioner. So the question is, COIC is in the process of changing their bylaws. And, but because the bylaws have not been changed yet, I think we should go ahead and fill this position?
I agree.
Because it's been, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't bring it up sooner. All of a sudden, I went, oh, my gosh, yeah, Katie, Katie hasn't been there for a couple of meetings, her Zoom meetings. So, so that would be okay? Okay, good. All right, so we will.
Somebody to fill a slot?
Yes. It's, there's five appointed members by, one from each Crook and Jefferson and three from Deschutes County. So, all right, so we'll, we'll get that done next week.
Well, I think because I see them involved in so many things, I'd like, when you get a suggested bylaws change, maybe you could bring that to our attention, too, because, you know, I noticed they run the, now they're running the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, they run the, facilitate the Deschutes Forest Collaborative, they do Housing For All Group, I mean, they got all these groups that they are in charge of, and they, they've decided who should be members, from what I can see on some of it. It's like, I'd like to know what, to make sure we keep them involved.
Well, this is our Central Oregon Council of Governments, a 190. If there's bylaws changes, we would be signing as the governing body, as one of the participants of a governing body. So, yeah, I mean, I definitely want to review that also.
I'll ask Dave, Dave has them. Dave, if you could, is he part of the call right now? Please, Dave, if you could send that to the other Commissioners, that would be excellent. Because I gave them feedback from Dave's review prior to our last meeting. But then they were going to let everyone think about it before we voted next month.
So what would be helpful is if we would see the before and after, so to speak, because I don't know what the bylaws say now.
Right.
So we might see how they're trying to change it.
There was a proposed bylaw change. Remember, a couple of years ago, there was the 1971 or '73 original coordination of the creation of the whole organization. And then there was a, like an operating management agreement, which was in place. And that was put in place because of some other, other federal guidelines, so they had more of a board. And then we determined that, hey, that's not the driving principles, it was the original agreement. So now we're back to the original agreement again, which is set up as our council of governments, including the cities. So I'd be very interested to see what the proposed changes are now.
Okay, great.
Speaking of that, so on the Deschutes River, Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, there's bylaws to approve and membership in it. And I thought we already were members, but they, for some reason, there must be something official we're supposed to do. But do you want to see what those bylaws are, if I bring them to the next meeting?
Right, we should get them before.
Yeah, let's, yeah, so let's get those, I'll see if I can get them in the next couple of days so we can talk about them on Monday, so I can give good feedback. I was kind of surprised that, I've been at several meetings, I thought they knew we wanted to be a member, but, but the bylaws also, okay.
Okay, great. All right, Commissioner Devon?
So Investment Advisory Committee meeting, did you offer to do that? Did we?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to do it.
Okay, so there's a meeting next Thursday, it's on my calendar.
Yeah.
And it should be you, I don't, did you get that?
I got a notice about it.
Yeah, so it's next Thursday.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure it's not on my schedule, so I'll take it off. Greg Munn coordinates that. Samantha, I think, is helping coordinate that also. So if you talk to Samantha, she can make sure.
Okay.
Have that, so that's next Thursday at noon. And I had already written down a legislative idea about urban renewal changes, you know, so this could go to the legislature. It was good to be able to ask that lady, Elaine Howard, the big picture here. You know, I just don't have a feel for it if it's, if, you know, once again, if Deschutes County just happens to be active with this, or does everywhere, every city looking at doing this around the state these days? Or, you know, I'm not sure how to calibrate these big urban renewal asks that have come through. And what we saw in Bend and coming down the Pike from Redmond, they're being polite and telling us what they're doing. And we say, thanks for telling us, and then that's all it is. So it's kind of an awkward situation. And just like the sheriff brought in originally, you know, the voters aren't really being informed and re-informed about what's going on here.
Yeah.
You know, that your tax dollars, there's a percentage being swept for the next 20 or 30 years and.
Oh, it's been 30.
Yeah, but nobody even sees it, and we just think magic happened here. Magic money shows up for these renewal districts and it's not.
I think it's great you're thinking about it, because I was surprised to learn about this situation with the education districts, school boards and the.
Yeah, so it's a little feedback deal.
They don't make a statement because they aren't losing 70, you know, 70 million dollars less.
It looks like.
Goes into the education system. But because it's on a statewide formula, they actually just get back 5 million dollars. So rather than, they, they literally, what I learned when I was doing my interviews with, with the chamber, the only two entities that commented, I think, were us and maybe Parks and Rec or something. But, so people asked me, well, you know, why is the county even getting involved in that?
Yeah, they don't.
That's what they literally asked me and criticized me. I'm like, well, wait, we were asked to get involved. I was surprised that others weren't getting involved. But it's, it's a massive amount of money, and, and I think it's great that you're talking about it.
Well, so the idea is to put it on a list of legislative ideas, maybe talk to, you know, and I can talk to, you know, Senator, whoever, you know, get something going here. But just to understand the big picture, the history of the state of Oregon, you know, is it a contentious item? Or are we just happening to be in the, you know, active time in Deschutes County now, or I don't know?
You can talk to Senator Lithicam, you can talk to Senator Canope, and I can talk to Senator Finley.
Here we go.
So, yeah, we've got them covered.
Yeah.
That's great. So this is good. We'll have to carry on.
If Whitney could just put that on a legislative, you know, just a reminder list, that's all.
Do you have anything else?
That's all I brought today.
Okay.
Well, I went to half a dozen meetings in the last few days, but.
Okay.
I have one other.
Yes?
So I saw last night a email from Tom about the Ethics and Compliance Hotline. And I was just kind of, I think I shared, I wanted to bring it up here, that really this was, this is written in your name, Tom, that you take the violations, but there's nothing about the Commissioners taking violations seriously. And I was just thinking we should somehow come up with a, something saying this was a board-passed policy to institute this. This isn't a county government-only policy, this is something we looked at as a public policy, so.
I think it's great that you, you'd like to do that, and I apologize for not doing it the first time around. I was planning on kind of featuring it a little bit in the Friday update that's supposed to come out this week. So I'd be delighted to put in some quotes or some, whatever language you'd like to see in, in terms of your value in it, your emphasis on it. And we can follow up with you and see if there's some.
Yeah, I think I'd, I'd be happy if you do it in the update, but I really think there should be an email that goes out to everybody, pointing this out, because this is a direct email to every county employee. You know, basis is, I take ethical valuations as well as perception very seriously. And it mentions Dave Given's involvement, which is good, and HR and county legal doesn't ever mention the Board of Directors, so. Seems like we maybe should do an email, just, you know, maybe come up with some, just wanted to clarify this is.
Well, I'd be comfortable with just the, just, but I'd be comfortable with the update, the county update. You know, we do take this seriously, and, you know, this is a new policy. It took a while to get to this point. I was kind of lukewarm on this because it just provides another outside feedback loop, which is not bad. But my point is, if, you know, hopefully we have the internal loops and communication open enough where anything could be acknowledged without having to go out to this loop. So as I say, the loop's not bad.
That's a good point, it's really an additional means, it's not a new policy in a way, is what you're saying.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a new system that's outside, you know, another loop, but as I say, so I, you know, I would hope that we have a culture and a relationships that, you know, we don't need to get out, out to there. But it's about, it's out there and it should be used if needed, so. I'd be very comfortable with just the weekly update or the county update. So I guess that kind of puts you in a spot where, do you want to see another email? Because he's requesting specifically for an email to be followed up, and I'm saying the county update would be appropriate.
It's pretty important, an email is fine.
I'm sorry, email?
Yeah, sure, why not?
Well, I mean, you could do it from the chair then, as the chair, or, you know, from all three of us, too, if you want to do something simple like that. So can I, it's, it augments Tom's email.
Yes.
Okay, well, if you want to come up a draft, I'll look at it.
All right.
If you have, what, my two bits?
Okay.
So I've got another update or two, just stuff I did in the last two days. So Monday was Association of Oregon Counties, I was able to join in Natural Resources, Transportation, Community Development, a Legislative Committee meeting and a board meeting. So that was quite a day of Zoom meetings. Basically, everybody that was involved at the AOC level, where not the fire counties is as much, you know, I mean, that's who attended. It was interesting to see what was going on. So we, you know, kind of acknowledged the fire events and the smoke in the state, but really just talked about each of the different events. Nothing really bubbled up as legislative ideas, but that's what we're setting up for this next month. This is September, so October, what does AOC want to start to, you know, advocate for, sign on to, or mature, setting up for the legislative session next year? So that was kind of the big picture, what was going on.
My calendar all took the passwords instead of, as the, instead of the telephone numbers on my phone system. Yeah.
Everything worked great for me in the.
Yeah, nothing worked great for me, every one of them was wrong. I had to, like, go to my original documentation, I couldn't believe, at least we figured out what, what number, yeah, somehow it got set up that way.
Yeah, it's tricky. I was able to dial in, zoom into the Fair Association meeting, just in support of the Fair Association, remember? Not the board or us, or, you know, Jeff was there and. attendance, the association was talking about, you know, this next proposed kind of agreement that would, something we're going to put in on paper or whatever in the near future. So I was able to, you know, just kind of say hi, I said a few words, but it was really their meeting I attended, so. They did put a, like a four or five-person committee together to, you know, kind of lay it out, figure out what they're looking for. One of the statements was that the agreement that was proposed 20 years ago, or whatever it was, is probably the boilerplate for what they want to do now. So that was just a starting point, is what I picked up from that meeting. And then 911 user board meeting, there was a, there was a radio tower, I think it was in Lynn County that was lost, or a communication tower from the fires. So they were able to rewire and connect in some radios on a site that we're involved in to at least get them the backside of their county some radio coverage. So there was a, some loss in public safety infrastructure. I don't know the specifics, but it was just mentioned. The Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization also yesterday at noon. So that's City of Bend, ODOT, and Deschutes County. Chris Dodi was there with me also. Nothing major there, just, there was some different agenda items. There's a big update about the transportation safety action plans. So the City of Bend and Deschutes County both did those, and that's all crash data, you know, either injuries or deaths when it's a bad crash, or minor crashes, and how the system could be engineered better, you know, fixing intersections or lanes for turning. Or is it, how much of it is driver behavior, or, you know, intoxication or texting and driving? So there, there's these published documents right now for Bend and Deschutes County proper for transportation safety plans. That's the stuff I did the last few days.
Okay. Yes, and I did have my Sisters ECO meeting yesterday, and Sisters is booming, Blackbeute is really booming, and I, the other side of the story is I think the average home sales were like almost 900,000 in Sisters last month. So.
Yeah.
It's.
Amazing.
People are, you know, and then of course we'll have, we'll create more unaffordable[1728.05]